Good evening. I'd like to call the planning board meeting, Boxborough Planning Board Meeting to order at 7:01 PM on July 21st, 2025. As always, this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, and the agenda has the link to it. It's also being recorded, so it can be accessed any time. So I'm going to start with taking a roll call of the members as I see them on the screen. I saw Rich a minute ago, so Rich Gazardi will start with you.
Gazardi present.
Thank you. Chris Doughty? Chris Doughty?
Doughty present, sorry, two mute buttons.
No worries. Thank you. Mark White?
White present.
And Cindy Markowitz?
Mark Woods present.
Thank you. I'm Werner present as well. So at this time, we'd like to open it up to any public comment on any subject matter that is not listed on the agenda right now. So if you have a question or a comment from the public, please feel free to raise your hand. Okay, and I am seeing none at this time. So it's not quite 7:05, so maybe we could tick off a couple of meeting minutes. Alec, do you want to pull those up for us to review?
The minutes weren't in the packet either.
I thought two meetings.
Under admin, there was the joint meeting, June 30th.
Thursday, so.
There were two anyway that I saw there. It looks like there's a third one in there nine hours ago.
That might be the site visit. If we go chronologically.
Alec, are you pulling them up right now?
Thank you, everybody, for your patience. It appears you have two minutes that were uploaded to your packet last week. Those were uploaded on Thursday. Those include July 15th, which was the site visit, as well as June 30th, and then the minutes of the joint meeting, which are hot off the presses and not ready for your approval because they were only uploaded this morning, are also in your packet, but those are just for you to be able to review at your leisure ahead of your next meeting. Do you want to start with June 30th?
Sure, thank you. Okay, any members have any comments on the June 30th, 2025 meeting minutes? Chris, go ahead.
It's a quick question. We had, I know at one point we were talking through a convention of identifying, you know, contributions to discussion as like, you know, chair clerk member throughout. I don't know if we want to start doing that in general. Like here, so like applicant is identified as applicant first, or is it, do we want to just keep it the way we've been doing it anyway? We're in the header, members are all identified.
Members have any comments about that?
I'm okay with the members not being specifically identified as members, but
Okay.
when residents speak, then it's good to, at least in their initial, identify where they are, because that's what we're supposed to do.
Yeah, I'd be in agreement with that too, and I've started in the last few meetings trying to identify speakers, at least street address or street, to identify them in the meeting minutes moving forward.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate. I think the Chair Werner is probably just a point of, like, as opposed to Ms. Markowitz, it's Chair Werner, since Rebecca, you are the Chair. So I'm okay with that. And I also agree that non-board members, we should identify who they are, because it just becomes, it's better for clarity.
Okay. Any other comments?
Big motion to approve the minutes of June 30th. Seems that we haven't amended them as written.
Second.
Thank you. Moved by Mark and seconded by Rich. Roll call.
Before we get to the vote, I'm sorry, I'm just catching up because I had a version on my own computer. Do we identify what, who the correspondence was from in our meeting documents, or should we be, you know, letter from so-and-so as opposed to just correspondence? I mean, I think it would be helpful.
I think that's actually a good point. You're talking about in the packet information at the end?
Yes, the meeting documents is a list of documents. I think it would be helpful to identify what the correspondence was.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Well, that's, sorry, that's my comment.
Then you should identify the minutes that were in the packet, and I mean, if you're gonna identify the subsets of information, then you're probably gonna make a deeper list there.
Well, maybe, I was thinking when you first said that, maybe specific to certain projects, like I think I find like the, I don't know, if we got a letter from Sudbury about the, you know, an application before us, or something like that, that might be helpful information to identify.
Well, a date, a date and the author is, I think, because, you know, if we go back and look at meeting minutes, we're not going to remember what, you know, when was the letter submitted or whatever, but I think the date and the author would probably be helpful in this list of, and probably the date of the meeting minutes as well that have been approved.
Well, just like in the minutes of the 170 Picnic Street, that shows the things that were in the packet. I'm okay with that. If there's letters that had to do with an application, then there would be the same heading for the, what the application name is and what items were in the packet. But under just general correspondence and minutes, unless you want to break those open and say correspondence from who and minutes for what meeting and.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, because again, the minutes are our only reference of what occurred that evening, and I think it's a useful, just expand on the correspondence date and author and the minutes, the dates that were presented for approval.
Probably a pretty light lift, I imagine, if the board's in agreement on that.
I don't know, we've managed to get by without that for eternity, so I don't really want to make more work for people needlessly. If it's in the packet and the packet is immortalized someplace, I think anybody can go to the packet and find it, but I don't think it's a bad thing to have. Just, I want to make more work.
So are we agreeing with the amendment or disagreeing with the amendment there?
It's a suggestion. It's not an amendment to the minutes. It's a suggestion to the minute taker to include the data correspondence, the author, and also the date of the minutes. That's a request.
All right, thank you. So I have a motion and a second on the floor right now. Let's take a vote in order, I see you. Chris Doughty?
Doughty, aye.
Mark White?
White, aye.
Rich Gazardi?
Gazardi, aye.
Cindy Markowitz?
Mark Woods, aye.
And Werner, aye. Thank you. We'll hold on the next minutes. I know we'd like to take them away, but let's open up our hearing, because I'm seeing some of the folks here, and it's 7:11, and it's posted for 7:05. So we want to continue the public hearing for Beaver Brook Road, OSCD special permit. In accordance with MGL Chapter 40A in the Boxborough zoning bylaw, 7.5 open space, commercial development, and 2.3 special permits, the Boxborough Planning Board will conduct a public hearing to review the application submitted by property owner Campanelli's Trigate Sub LLC to amend OSCD 97-01 and OSCD 01-01. So it's a general update on this project before we jump into a brief presentation. The board members were invited out to the project site to walk the site last week. We conducted a pretty useful, you know, review of the site, and we're able to just walk the property, assess the proposal, and just see it in real time. So thank you for the invitation to do that, and thank you to the board members that were able to attend that meeting. It's very productive from my standpoint. So I am assuming that Attorney Schneider is going to be doing us, doing a brief presentation for us. I see her hand raised. So with that, I will turn it over to you, Attorney Schneider.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Good evening. Just as a reminder, my name is Johanna Schneider. I am Project Legal Counsel. I am here with Russ Dion and Jeff Wyman from Campanelli, with Garrett Horstfall from Kelly Engineering, Bob Micho from MDM Transportation, and John Rockwood from Echotac, our natural resources consultant. I was very sorry to have missed the site visit, but I'm glad that you all got a chance to get out to the site. The last time we were before the board was mid-June, and since then, we have been working to address what we understood to be the open issues from that meeting. In particular, we are here tonight, back with updated traffic counts, with a report about our outreach to Natural Heritage. Members of the board had asked us if we could get something from Natural Heritage confirming the scope of the existing conservation and management permit. We have submitted to the record an email from Jesse Lettich from Natural Heritage, but we will also be providing a summary of that. And we also submitted, and will be reviewing, what Natural Heritage had to say about requirements with respect to non-state listed species at the site. We are also going to provide some more information to support our requested term for the amended and restated OSCD permit that we're seeking, and also a more refined list of community benefits associated with the application. So we've got a super quick presentation, and then we are happy to answer any questions that the board may have. We'll walk through each of the topics I outlined. We're going to start with traffic counts, and we have Bob Micho. And Bob is muted, and I think if he could be unmuted by the host so that he can address the board, please.
Good evening, board members. For the record, Robert Micho with MDM Transportation Consultants. What I'd like to do is address a question the board raised, and that is traffic counts, when counts were last conducted. We've since actually gone out in June of this year, between June 10th and 13th, and conducted counts at several locations in the vicinity of the site. Swanson Road, as shown in this aerial diagram, was one of those locations so that we could quantify how much traffic on an hourly and a daily basis occurs currently, with a mix of uses that currently exist along Swanson Road. And then we've done the same count program at Beaver Brook Road, which is also shown here at the entry point from Swanson Road on a Beaver Brook to understand the characteristics that are specific to the park. And then you'll see a third count location near Littleton Country Road, the other gateway, if you will, to the campus from the north. Each of these locations were quantified for hourly and daily traffic activity using video-based equipment and video-based processing, so that we have a very good, accurate record of the types of vehicles that are using these roadways, as well as the volumes. In the bottom half of the slide that's presented here, you'll see that Swanson Road, as the board is aware, has a series of uses that include residential uses as well as commercial uses. Mastiot has a facility there, and there's also the Swanson recreational facility. So the volumes that we've collected are representative of the activities at each one of those land uses, as well as the park. The next slide provides a snapshot of what that data looks like in a graphical format for the board's benefit. The volumes that are shown in orange are the volumes that comprise traffic to and from all of the land uses that currently border Swanson Road. And you'll see in blue format on top of that, those trips that are specifically associated with the park and the active uses within the park. So the cumulative total of these volumes, if you look at any particular day, Tuesday, for instance, generated just under 4,000 vehicles over the course of an entire day. That fluctuates a little bit. Wednesday has a similar volume. Thursday was the highest recorded volume day. It's about 200 more vehicles an hour, or a day, rather, relative to Tuesday. And Wednesday, Friday is the lower generating day, at just over 3,000 trips per day. You'll see that the vast majority of traffic that currently is on Swanson Road is associated with the land uses that border that road. The park itself accounts for 25%, 24 to 25% of that overall daily volume that's currently traveling on Swanson Road. On average, when you look at Tuesday through Friday, that average park daily use of the Swanson represents 24% of volume. The next slide provides a closer summary, if you will, of each of the count locations that were graphically presented there. For each of the days, you'll see the volumes fluctuate a little bit and are averaged in this columnar format. So this is simply a deeper dive into the data that is graphically represented in the prior slide. You'll see that over the course of a typical peak hour, on Swanson Road, there are about 300 total peak trips, two-way trips, that's both northbound and southbound, whereas Beaver Brook Road, which is the primary point of access and egress for the park, generates less than 100 peak hour trips during that same morning peak hour. And the Beaver Brook Road, on the Littleton County roadside generates a very little amount of traffic, only about 150 or so daily trips and 16 peak hour trips in the morning. Likewise, similar patterns in the evening, 360 total peak hour two-way trips on Swanson Road. 112 of those are accountable to the park itself, and the Beaver Brook at Littleton County Road has less than 20 per hour during that same peak hour. So I think that illustrates current conditions. I know it was a board question, and certainly the numbers that are presented here, relative to what has always been assumed to be the park generation and the associated mitigation for the park are well below projected levels, and we believe will continue to be for some time. With that, I'll hand it to the next speaker, and we'll be available for questions. Thank you.
I'm seeing John Rockwood raise his hand. Is that the next speaker? Can, well, I can actually probably unmute you. Can John Rockwood be unmuted, please?
Yep.
Thank you.
All set. Thank you. John Rockwood from Echotac. After the prior meeting, I contacted Jesse Lettich at Natural Heritage and asked him for information in writing relative to the concerns of the planning board. And basically, he indicates that the existing CMP is valid. It's under the control of the proponent. It allows for construction on lots 700 and 800. No update or amendment of the CMP is anticipated for the proposed OCSD amendment, and the proponent is in compliance currently with all CMP conditions. So we're following all the rules relative to the conservation and management permit, and we are in complete compliance so far. With regard to commitments from Campanelli, we heard the discussion regarding grassland bird species and the like, and we're proposing a development of a grassland restoration management area on lots 16 and 17. Natural Heritage needs to review that for consistency with the CMP and approval, because that area is located within mapped habitat at this point. We're also committed to develop a long-term inspection and maintenance program for the barriers and turtle tunnels, and development of a construction phase protection plan associated with the proposed work on lots 700 and 800. Both of those products would be reviewed by Natural Heritage prior to implementation. And that's, that's the presentation, and I'm available to answer questions.
Thank you. The next speaker could raise your hand, or someone could identify them for us, so we can have you unmuted.
Thank you. Before I hand this over to Russ Dion, I just wanted to give a little bit of preview. At the last meeting, we did touch on the reasons why we are seeking to do this build-out over a 20-year period. And as discussed the last time, there certainly is an ebb and flow in the market, and having sufficient time to adapt to those economic changes is important. I think a great example of this is actually right next door, the Trail Ridge Condos. Their timeline was between 2006 and 2021. It took them 15 years to build out 52 residential units. And so I think that's a good illustration of, you know, these bigger projects do take time, and that project was not even approaching the scale and scope of what we're showing here. I think it's also critical to note that Campanelli is a long-term owner and has invested a significant amount of capital into the park to lay the foundation for its future success. I'd like to have Russ Dion from Campanelli talk a little bit more about that investment and what Campanelli has done to date in the park. Russ, are you unmuted?
Yes, I believe I am, Johanna. Can the board hear me? Great. Good evening, Madam Chair, and good evening, all members of the planning board. As we all know, myself and my partners have now just crossed the fourth year anniversary of ownership in direction of the park at Beaver Brook, and we're all very happy with the accomplishments and the progress to date. To quote the former board selectman and hard worker within town, John Markowitz, when I first met him, prior to us closing on this transaction, he said to us, "Take your time. It takes time to go through the world of Boxborough and the regulations allow time." When I saw him at the opening for Craft Food Hall just about a year ago, he came up to me and he shook my hand, and he said, "Russ, I think you listened to me." And I said, "Well, thank you, John, and you've been a great steward," so I just wanted to pass that along. Campanelli is very happy with the investment in the park. Outside of acquisition and development costs, we have, by the end of this calendar year, will have spent just a little under $8 million in capital costs over the four-year period. We expend about $2.3 million annually in park operating costs and park maintenance, just a few financial figures. The history of the park has provided occupancy of 92%. As you all know, we have Metronic, Cisco, TV, Intel, and Craft Food Halls in the park, and we're quite happy with that roster of tenants, and we look forward to increasing that roster going forward. In June of 2024, we completed all DEP regulations for a upgrade to the wastewater treatment facility. In September of 2025, excuse me, in the summer of 2025, we've been a major player in the West Boxborough Water Extension Project, working with the town of Boxborough and West Fox from day one, working with Littleton Light and Water from day two, in getting all the proper easements and permitting both through CONSCOM and endangered species for that project to take place. And I was trying to reach out to Littleton this morning. The best of my visual knowledge, that project is about 85 to 90% complete. Their contractor has worked a bit quicker than what everyone had thought. They put two crews out there, and that project has gone well. We have installed a full PFAS filter system in Building 500 in September of 2024. And once we connect to the extension, the water main extension from Littleton, all buildings will be served by PFAS filtered water system through the municipal system of Littleton. The solar array was activated in September of 2024. We did public water supplies to our well in August of 2024, and then in May, later this spring, in 2025, we have upgraded our groundwater discharge permit for onsite disposal. An ongoing accomplishments to date is just a constant public amenity maintenance, walkways, benches, lighting, tree trimming, snow clearing, athletic courts, basketball courts, volleyball courts, and we look to continue that work. Next slide, please. As part of this discussion, which has been ongoing now for quite some time, even outside of the realm of a public hearing, we know that there's community benefits that we want this OSCD opportunity to give back to the community. And the things that we've tabled as substantial benefits to the community at large is an increase in open space. As you are well aware, the proposal includes up to 94 new acres to be put into a land use restriction, which will bring the total to 248 acres, a total that represents more than.
Assume we're all here. It's just Russ who's not?
I think it is just Russ.
Yep.
It's usually me.
I was gonna say, it's usually me.
I was looking at anyone move, but I was like, okay.
So was I, and everybody was very still for a second. It looks like Russ is definitely frozen. So I will pick back up where he was. You know, we thought it would be useful to close our remarks this evening with a discussion of the community benefits that we are proposing. I think that, you know, some of them we've discussed, some of them are new, but the idea is to try to be responsive to questions and concerns that we've heard from the board and members of the public. And, you know, again, I'll briefly run through them unless or until Russ can rejoin us. As the board is aware, and I think, you know, probably the most important contribution of this project is that it is being done through the OSCD, we are going to be significantly increasing the amount of open space placed in land use restriction. Included in that is a proposed donation of Lot 100 to the town for public recreation use, that is just over five acres. We would also like to make a monetary contribution of $25,000 to the town to be used toward designing whatever it is that the town would like to see on Lot 100. As John detailed, we are voluntarily providing a grassland management plan for Lot 16 and Lot 17. That is to address concerns about bird habitat on the remainder of the site, even though we're not required to do this by Natural Heritage. We do think that this should address some concerns, and we're happy to do it. Based on the traffic information that Bob Micho presented, we think that there is an opportunity to do a little bit of traffic calming on Swanson Road, although our contribution is relatively small as a proportion of trips on that road. You know, we do want it to be safe for the town, so we are proposing to install two radar speed indicators on Swanson Road. We also, as part of the open space, rather than restricting the Harvard parcel in the upper left-hand corner of our site plan, I think you're all familiar with it, we would propose to actually donate that to the Harvard Conservation Trust so that, you know, they have control over what happens on that parcel. And then finally, as we've discussed previously, you know, when the new development is achieved, we do, we have measured a substantial you know, when the new development is achieved, we do, we have measured a substantial increase in the commercial tax base for the town.
Johanna, can you actually verify what that projected tax increase is? Because I think between the last two presentations, two different numbers were presented for that, and I'd just like clarification on that.
Yeah, I'm gonna call on either Russ or Jeff Wyman, who are, are the keeper of our numbers to see if one of them has the updated tax base, commercial tax base increase number. Jeff, is that something that you can provide? Oh, you're unmuted. Wonderful.
I think Russ is back in.
Russ, are you there? I am back in and I think the best way to do this, it would be just to recite some of the taxes per year on the developed parcels. We can project an estimate, and that's exactly what it would be. But what I would like to say is that two hundred Beaver Brook Road, which is the Metronics building, the tax bill for two thousand and twenty-five is one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. For three hundred Beaver Brook Road, which is where Cisco is currently located, the tax bill for, the tax bill for two thousand and twenty-five is two hundred and fifteen thousand. For TUV, the tax base is one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And for five hundred Beaver Brook, the tax is three hundred and sixty-six thousand. So Jeff, if you could kindly just add those up for me real quickly, what I would like to say is that represents about four hundred and ninety Jeff?
We lose Russ again?
We did.
Came back online.
So. Yeah, so basically, there's, there's the taxes. So I think that's better. You know, you can get a feel for TUV building at sixty-four thousand square feet. Right now it's generating one hundred and thirty-seven thousand. A Metronic building is roughly a hundred thousand square feet, maybe ninety-two thousand, but right in there. The three hundred Beaver Brook building is about a hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet. All those buildings lie for the most part within the marketplace today and sizes of buildings that we could potentially be building in our master plan. And five hundred Beaver Brook is a bit of an outlier because that's two hundred and eight thousand square feet. Much larger complex, which has, of course, a much higher tax revenue. So I just wanted to share those stats.
I appreciate the clarification on that. And thank you for keeping condensed presentation to us. I know that's not easy to do with a, you know, a large team like yours and so much information to, to share. So, but we really do appreciate that so that we keep our meetings moving forward. Okay, with that, I'd love to open this discussion up to board members for comments, questions. If you could raise your hands. Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Campinelli team for the presentation. Very helpful. And again, thanks for the sidewalk the other day. I'm just gonna pick up on a few things from the presentation. I'll start, I'll go backwards from the, the financials because that was also of interest to me. So, so it looks like an earlier presentation estimated about, I think it was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in increased tax benefits. And then the more recent presentation estimated about one point two million. My understanding is that, as you mentioned, the Intel building is sort of the outlier because that has a higher valuation. I'm assuming it's because it's office space and not sort of R and D industrial space. So I, my understanding is the types of buildings you wanted to build were going to be more along the lines of the TUV building, which would bring in something closer to the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar tax revenue. Is that, is that the correct assumption? I just want to understand why you bumped up your tax assumption up to a one point two million with your more recent estimate from the prior presentation.
Well, I, as I sit here right now, I can't really pinpoint the difference between seven fifty and one point two, but what I could do subsequent to this meeting is to project the taxes on a parcel basis based on the square footage tax here. And it's, it gets a little blended because each building has very unique characteristics to it. So even though five hundred looks like an office, it was a large data center for Cisco and it has large power requirements. So the building gets looked at from the assessors differently than just as an office building. Same with building two hundred. It gets looked at a little bit differently. But what we can do, and I have, I'd love to do this for you, is to take the four developed properties and translate the tax to a square foot basis based on use, and then translate that over the proposed square footage. So we have a better transparency into a number, and I think that should be clarified.
But, but I guess my question is, is, it sounds like it's a type of, of the use of the building that's driving sort of a higher tax revenue for the town. I just want to see if I understand, if I'm understanding that correctly, that a, a large industrial-sized building may not generate as much tax revenue as, as a data center, for instance, I think is what you're saying. But again, you, you folks provided us those two different numbers and I was just trying to understand what, what was the difference between the lower and the higher number? Because you've indicated they were, yeah, that would be a higher tax benefit in the second round of slides. So I just wanted to understand that.
Yeah, and I, I will be happy to try to analyze that in that manner. I think the interesting piece here is, and would be happy to even talk to the town assessor on this. We now have four hundred Beaver Brook, which represents a certain amount of square footage as lab, a certain amount of square footage as office, and a certain amount of square footage as sort of an open flex space where there's R and D going on. And I do believe that the assessor looks at the square footages of buildings as a component of the overall. He just doesn't classify a single use and then project an estimated tax. So it does get a little complicated. We have TUV has three types of uses within the building and it, and it gets looked at from a tax assessment perspective that way.
Okay, I, I appreciate that. Like I said, it was just a, a trying to reconcile those two numbers that Campinelli had provided to us. Let's see. Second item, I guess, appreciate the offer of the twenty-five thousand dollar towards lot one hundred. Can I just ask, was, how did that number come about? Was it just an offer from Campinelli? Was there some discussion from the town on what, you know, what the town might need to get some sort of, you know, started on some design situation there? I'm just curious as to how that twenty-five thousand dollar number came to be.
The twenty-five thousand dollar number was not a discussion that took place with, with any representative of the town. It was a number that myself and my partners felt was a, a gesture to, to get some thinking going about how this land could be used and what is the right use here? There is, should it be active recreational? Should it be a court? Should it be a playground? Should it be a shading pavilion? Should it be pastoral land? I, I really think the town should sort of think about that from its Recreation Committee perspective and in Land Use Committee perspective, but we, we felt it was some seed money to, to start a process.
Okay, great. Thank, and thank you for that, that offer, certainly. Can, can go a long way. I would be interested, during John Rockwood's assessment of that parcel, is there, is there high conservation value of that parcel? I, I looked through some of the maps. I didn't see lot one hundred as sort of shaded as high conservation. So I was just interested in John Rockwood's assessment of the conservation value of lot one hundred.
It's largely old field at this point with a couple of tree rows and a bunch of shrubs and saplings developing within it. It's, um, it's what we call an early successional area. So it's grasses and forbs with some shrubs coming in. And it's going to continue to develop as more shrubs develop within there and the saplings and shrubs continue to grow.
There's no rare species habitat on that particular parcel or what?
It's, it's all mapped as habitat, but that lot is one that was approved for development under the CMP. So there'd be limited interaction with natural heritage related to moving forward with permitting for that. It would probably require permitting through the Conservation Commission.
Okay, so there's, there's some sort of natural habit, natural value in maintaining it as a in some sort of, I don't want to say agriculture, but natural state as opposed to putting development on there. There is some value from a conservation standpoint.
You know, the lot could be split and it could be used for multiple purposes. You could keep the peripheral areas as a buffer and put some type of recreational use in the front towards the road.
Okay. And then another question, of the sixteen properties that Campinelli owns, sounds like lot one hundred might be offered to the town. I, I want to understand currently Campinelli pays taxes on all sixteen parcels. If, is, is lot one hundred meant to be taken off tax rules if turned over to the town? Or is it Campinelli would still is own the dirt per se on that parcel?
Russ, you are muted.
Okay. I think that's a discussion we'd like to have with the town. I, you know, similar to the Cisco formula for lot nine hundred, lot nine hundred was, is the multipurpose soccer lacrosse field that I know gets a fair amount of use from the youth athletic leagues. Because we see that the traffic go there on, on the weekends and we also do see somewhat, quite a bit of that traffic at Craft Food Hall, which is awesome. We, we talked about it internally. We would love to donate it to the town so that way there, whichever way the town chooses to use the land, we don't really need to be obligated to the permitting. But I think it does, you know, represent an opportunity that once the town has a direction for the land, that maybe there's ways and means in which Campinelli may participate in that. But at the moment, we feel a donation of the land to the town is a good vehicle, but, you know, subject to the town's willingness to do that.
Okay, great. I, I appreciate that too. And I'll certainly generous offers. I just want the board to be aware that if they do that, then there's the, the tax payment on those properties, even though they're not developed properties and tax might be considered relatively minimal, should be factored into the revenue loss that we get with, with the gain of the, of the land. So just wanted to make board members. I have a few more questions about traffic and, and the wastewater treatment, but I'll stop now and let some other board members chime in. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Rich, go ahead. You're next.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. So just two questions. The first is on, and, and thank you, Campinelli team, for a succinct and helpful presentation. This answered some questions and it made a couple of things clear. So I just have a couple of questions on it, just to get a little more clarity for myself. The, on page, I guess it's exhibit six, Natural Heritage Coordination. So the existing conservation and management permit is valid. It's under the control of proponent, meaning I think Campinelli must own the land and controls that that conservation area. In, on slide, I guess it's exhibit eight, there's discussion, maybe, no, sorry, exhibit nine. A donation of the parcel, of the Harvard parcel to Harvard Conservation Trust. Maybe, and maybe it's kind of going down the path where Cindy was going. What, what's the significant difference there between a conservation partial, parcel that's in the control and owned by Campinelli versus one that's owned by the town or donated to the town?
Yeah, I think that, that those are great questions. Thank you for asking them. I think that, you know, leaving aside the tax issue, I think the donation of the Harvard parcel, similar to the donation of lot one hundred, I think there are a couple of ways to do it. We know that these are going to be dedicated for some non-commercial use with respect to lot one. We believe that the town has indicated in the past they'd like to use it for public recreation use. And the Harvard parcel, you know, one way or the other, is going to be restricted for conservation. I think our feeling is that, so if it's just restricted, then Campinelli continues to own the dirt, own the fee of the land. But then it is subject to restrictions so that Campinelli cannot develop on it. And I think we're fine with that as a, as an option or as an alternative. But I think that the advantage of, you know, as Russ started to say, deeding lot one hundred, you know, donating it to the town makes it so that the town can do what it wants with it. And if it wants to permit it for one thing or for another, that's, you know, that's the town's project to do. I think similarly with respect to the Harvard parcel, you know, depending on what the Conservation Trust would like to do with it, if they own it in fee and Campinelli no longer owns it and doesn't own it even subject to a restriction, I think it does give the Conservation Trust, you know, more authority and oversight over what happens on that parcel than Campinelli continuing to own the fee subject to a restriction would.
Okay, thank you. And I guess one, just follow-up clarification on that point is, has that been discussed with the Harvard Conservation Trust? Is there alignment there or is this a, you know, a sort of a, just a Campinelli offer at this point?
It's just an offer at this point.
I can answer that a little bit for you, Johanna, just to add a little bit more color and history. We haven't had any recent discussions with the Harvard Conservation Trust regarding this. That would be something that, you know, we would need to do going forward. When we acquired the land four years ago, within the first six to eight months, a gentleman representing the Harvard Conservation Trust reached out to me and I tried real hard to locate his name and I was unable to do so. And inquired if we would be interested in donating the land. And I had explained to him that we would absolutely be interested in donating the land at an appropriate time. I had explained to him that the OSCD permitting that Cisco had procured some time ago had expired. And we needed to go through a process to have the OSCD put back in place. And I didn't want to make any suggestions prior to understanding that environment. So that was three and a half years ago, but at the moment, as Johanna had mentioned, we don't have a strong obligation one way or the other. We have watched multiple transactions of land on the Harvard side in the last eighteen months be transactional and the Harvard Conservation Trust does own land and they have quite a an assembly of parcels of conservation that are linked together. So we do understand this is a critical parcel for them. And we are amenable to, to either, either strategic way of holding the land or, or they hold the land.
Okay. Thank you, Russell. And then I, I guess my second question is, on the grassland management plan for lots sixteen and seventeen, which, you know, I'm looking, and when I go to the, the map, which is in exhibit one, seventeen's twenty-three acres, sixteen's three acres, so you're looking at twenty-five-ish acres there. And then I, but the, and then the picture shows a specific area, I think, within that looks like adjacent to the active recreational field, but it shows six plus or minus acres. So maybe, I, I don't know if it would just be helpful to understand kind of what that grassland looks like relative to the aggregate parcel. Looks like there's some wetlands in there. So obviously there's a constraint. So I'm just curious how the, how we get, how you get to the six acres and what makes that the right, you know, the right part of that parcel to do that.
Yeah, in reality, the grassland area will be about ten acres. But birds typically use, you know, the center portions. So we need to maintain the edges. And that area, the four acres, will be maintained in a similar manner to the six acres. So there's ten acres, but we're calling out, you know, a primary grassland versus a supporting. All of it can be used by various bird species. Ten acres is, is a decent size and it'll cover a large number of grassland birds all the way up to bobolinks, for example. Four acres is, you know, more common for some of the smaller birds, like the ones that have been seen on the site. But, you know, the idea was to put this in, avoid wetland impacts, avoid cutting any forest. We have a couple of shrub thickets in there, but it's largely an existing hay We have a couple of uh, shrub thickets in there, but it's largely an existing hayfield. And you really need to take the hayfield species and convert them to warm season grasses, which is what the grassland birds prefer. So that's what we're working with natural heritage on at this point.
All right, that's helpful. Thank, thank you, John. I appreciate it. Um, uh, those are the questions I have. Thank you, Rebecca.
Thanks, Rich. Um, Russ, I'm still seeing your hand up. Was that just leftover or did you have something else you wanted to say?
Just leftover. Thank you.
Yeah, great. Um, any other uh, board members have comments? Chris, Mark?
I think Mark was first.
Um, not seeing Mark's hand raised. No, comments for either of you or do you have something, Chris?
I, I had a couple others. Letting Mark first. Um, yeah, so thanks for the uh, the financials. I was curious about, because that was one of my open questions on the, how we were getting a number for the anticipated impact on, you know, commercial taxes. Um, I don't know if that chart was in the packet and I'm just missing it, but the one that you had up just a few minutes ago. Um, I did some quick math off, off of it. It looked like the table that had all of the currently undeveloped areas and what their um, taxes were in twenty twenty-five. That was roughly a hundred and thirty-something, a hundred and forty thousand. Um, sorry, I forget which slide it was. Um, and depending on how you could completely get that the, the revenue from a, a given uh, building depends a lot on what that structure is. So the estimates that kind of game out potential options um, for what those buildings might be would be helpful. Cause like if you did the math, assuming all five new buildings are all just like two, or if they're the average of all of them, you do get a big swing of about a half a million either. Uh, if you deduct what both land itself is currently getting taxed at, it looks like an, an increase for Boxborough of somewhere between six hundred and a million. Um, just by my quick napkin math. So if you're able to project that out better, because I, I think the, the buildings on the eight hundreds might be significantly bigger uh, potentially. So it might be bigger than that. I was just trying to validate some of those numbers, because I was curious how it got there. Um.
Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. Um, while Chris was speaking, I just did a couple, a little bit of math, which I promised I would do for Cindy prior to the next meeting. If we break out TUV on a square foot basis, TUV is paying the largest square foot tax in the park at two fifteen a square foot. The large building five hundred pays a dollar seventy-six over the square footage. So it just goes to show that we're not tax assessors. I know you aren't either. But there's a lot that goes into it. And Chris did say, which I didn't say, a lot goes into the way the structure is made as well. Um, so I just, this is, this will come out. We'll, we'll create a slide that breaks things down by square footage and use. But I just did some quick math and I wanted to show that on a square foot basis, TUV is paying, paying the highest tax in the park. At least I believe so at the moment. Okay.
Okay. Even though that building is less, it's more per square footage, because it's a smaller building.
That's correct. TUV is sixty-four thousand square feet versus building five hundred is two hundred and eight thousand. That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, because I'd be curious to, because I think that'd be, yeah, that'd be helpful uh, for residents to know, like how, how big could this be? Knowing that it might take ten, fifteen, twenty years for everything to get built and all that, but it is just helpful to know. Um, other thing I was curious about, because um, I think it was Rich asked where, or somebody asked where the twenty-five thousand came from on trying to design something around Lot A Hundred. I was trying to just get something to compare it to. So uh, down the road from is uh, Liberty Field is about, about five-ish acres. So it's similar size. When we, the, the improvements we did there, put in like a playground uh, and some walking paths and stuff, that, for that, we, the town appropriated about one and a half million uh, to do that. So I don't know that twenty-five thousand, was that to help um, just figure out design for what we want to do with it? Or was it, was that just a, yeah, any comment on that?
Sure. The twenty-five thousand is, is really a seed money to start a process. So the town can, if they want to hire a consultant to look at some test fits of some various uses. Um, you know, a landscape architect might be helpful to, to study the land and, and put a few uses on it to get some sense of feasibility, get some sense of scale and, and use of the land. One thing I do want to say as, as we were talking about that parcel, um, there is a paved walkway um, on the westerly edge of Lot One Hundred, which separates Lot One Hundred from, from the pond. And there's a few benches there and quite a few people walk that path because it, it goes from the cul-de-sac road along the eastern edge of the pond and it goes up to a, a walkway bridge that brings you back to the network of trails in the park. Um, and that, that pathway gets quite a bit of use. So it, there is an amenity that abuts that parcel. It actually is part of that parcel, that walkway parcel. Um, so the answer is, the money's there as a seed money to start some feasibility. I know there would be, um, once there was a resolution as to what would be best fitted, then there might be a CPA opportunity. There may be other opportunities um, as well as um, a Campanelli opportunity to figure out, you know, where, where, where does the um, expenses get paid for going forward for, for some type of loose use, like you mentioned. We did study the, um, it's not in your community, but we studied the playground that was built in um, West Acton across the street from Eastern West Brewery and, and the coffee shop there. So we understand these municipal projects are not cheap.
Yeah, they, they cost more than you expect them to. Um, okay. Yeah, I definitely know that, that loop you're talking about. Um, and it looks like, but looking at the map, I think the bridge would still be retained. Yeah, as part of the lots uh, next to behind Four and Five Hundred. Um.
Yeah, I can't remember exactly where that bridge is, which lot it's on. Um, I think, I think it's on land that is already in permanent restriction from the original OSCD.
Yeah, I think it's not satellite picture, so I'm not a hundred percent, but sounds okay. Okay. Well, no, that, thanks. That, that, that helps.
I do just want to comment, just to help the, the board. Cindy asked a great question and I did do some math on a square footage basis. So Metronics tax revenue is a dollar eighty-five on a square foot basis. Um, Cisco, which is three hundred is a dollar seventy-six. And I already mentioned that five hundred Beaver Brook is a dollar seventy-six. So however the assessor has assessed three hundred and five hundred, similar buildings, similar look, similar use. And then I did mention TUV is the highest on a square foot basis, smallest building in the park at two fifteen per square foot. And our real estate interest and our, our market trend and where we're going is TUV-like uses in the park with R and D uses, laboratory and office. Um, we, we've talked about that um, from the beginning. So, so the buildings that are being proposed are currently the buildings that are generating the highest tax revenue in the park on a square foot basis.
Thanks, Russ. Chris, did you have any other questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, Chris. Um, any other questions from the board? Go ahead, Mark. You're muted.
Unmute. Sorry. Um, I don't think we've talked about this yet. What? Russ, do you anticipate are going to be like the service requirements? Like what are you going to need from the town? As far as services, are we going to need additional fire staff? We, we haven't talked about this as a board yet. Um, you know, more fire equipment. Uh, I remember when Cisco first came to town, that was when we had to buy a ladder truck. Um, more emergency services, stuff like that. I mean, I'm kind of curious as if anybody's thought about the, the consequences for us on that end of it.
Well, it's a great question, Mark. Um, I can say that we've had some discussion with police and fire in the past when we were going through the TUV permitting. We've met informally with um, with the town and um, with that building, I believe the rooftop of TUV was forty-one feet, which is um, nineteen feet shorter than building five hundred. Okay. So I, I wasn't around when Cisco was around, clearly we all know that, but that building at five hundred is four stories and fifty-nine, sixty feet tall. Um, so if there was a reason to procure more firefighting equipment to go to a building of that height, I could understand that. Um, current zoning, current zoning in the park is forty-five feet and we're proposing to stay between forty and forty-five feet max. Um, TUV would have been a shorter building. Um, the types of uses that a TUV, a electronics, clean laboratory uses need is generally, depending on user, anywhere from twenty-eight to thirty-four feet is generally the space that they need. Um, and I can show you buildings in Marlboro and in Devons that have been built that way. Um, TUV had a very special piece of equipment that they needed to do testing in and to house that equipment, they needed a building that had a higher roof. So I don't know what uses we will actually see in the park, but in our preliminary discussions during the TUV process, the, the fire department, police department represented that they, they felt the capacity of their departments to handle a TUV building remains unchanged. Um, but that should be revisited during the site plan approval process for an exact building. Then we know what the roof would be, what the combustibility of the exterior wall would be. Uh, TUV is completely non-combustible. Um, and what the use would be and what is the risk factor? So those things go into a fire department, police department assessing what their future needs would be based on, based on how it's going to be used.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions, Mark?
Nope.
All right, thank you. Um, I have a couple of um, comments. Cindy, are you okay with me jumping in?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I, I was going for my second bite.
A few things came out of, um, just uh, for me, I'm a very visual person. Being on site was really helpful for me to be able to see the space and kind of um, see the neighboring parcel uh, behind seven hundred, see the grasslands, um, and just be able to walk it and talk it. So um, just, and I'm hearing right now, Russ, you say, um, your goal is to, to, um, you know, create buildings similar to TUV. So um, a couple of thoughts came out of that site meeting for me. Um, these buildings as proposed currently are absolutely massive. Um, even in comparison to TUV, they seem to be larger um, by almost double in size footprint potentially. Um, not saying that that would happen, um, but potentially they, they um, are being proposed almost twice as big um, currently. Um, and so, you know, I'm, I'm wondering if the design team has given consideration to a smaller footprint potentially for that. Um, I'm, I'm pairing that with um, all of the feedback that we're hearing from community members about protecting um, the grasslands and stuff like that. Um, I did love to see that there's not much impact to um, woodlands out there. Um, it's a very small um, kind of juvenile growth, kind of um, forested area outcropping that potentially could be impacted. Um, most of it was in the grasslands, but I think, you know, I'm hearing repeatedly um, protection of the grasslands. And I'm wondering if there's any consideration that could be made to some kind of a contiguous strip of grasslands in a smaller footprint proposal for um, the buildings. Um, I'm also, um, it was interesting to start talking about grading out there. Um, when um, uh, Jeff was just describing um, kind of the elevation changes. Um, it became apparent that um, specific to seven hundred, I believe, I think that's the lot right in front of the, or right opposing the um, the uh, residential units next door. Um, that the level of the building as proposed currently could potentially be um, at the same height of that neighboring um, structure. Uh, so in concept, just really to dumb this down, they would be looking straight out potentially into another building um, from, from their upper level. Um, so again, um, you know, is there any consideration to the height of that building? For instance, um, the footprint size contiguous grasslands running through those seven hundred and eight hundred lots. Um, and this doesn't have to be, these are observations. I don't need a response right now, but I would definitely appreciate some thought to this. Um, I also, um, it was very apparent how much uh, parking is underutilized out there, um, when we were going around the site. Um, so consideration, um, again, another question, would the team be consider, consider uh, a great reduction of parking and/or um, some kind of transit, um, transportation kind of option uh, to limit the amount of, of impervious to these sites. Um, and then uh, the last observation was also a little bit surprising to me is that um, it seemed that there was a fair amount of traffic um, cutting through um, those back lots. Um, I was kind of surprised to see people going through and the speeds that they were carrying just did not seem um, at all what I would have expected for the roadway. So I'm just pointing it out as an observation on that one day that we were out on site, but um, uh, you know, again, something for the team to consider um, as, as a possibility is some kind of traffic calming um, um, along that, that back roadway. Um, okay. Um, I don't know, Russ, if you want to respond to any of that stuff now or take it and respond to us at a later date. Um, those are just some observations.
Yeah, no, I think I'll just respond to the, the, the sort of easier ones, if you will. Um, you know, certainly, I, I was away last week and was not able to make the site visit. Um, remind me, was it about two o'clock in the afternoon or was it at four?
I think it was two. Um, Jeff was a good host, so.
Um, it, it is interesting because it is summertime. Um, and there's probably a lot more traffic that may be using that road during the summer months than there is during the school bearing months. But I can't really tell. Okay. I know Bob set up the traffic and we talked about that, but clearly I'm concerned about any um, high speeds and you know, we would, I need to talk to our property management folks to keep an eye on that. And we, we could certainly put in some speed bumps and other things. That's, that's something we can monitor. As far as um, parking, I just want to, I just want to just mention a few simple things. Um, the current zoning would require four spaces per thousand for office and R and D use. The OSCD applications that were approved for Cisco allowed the parking to be reduced to three point three spaces per thousand. And that's what you're seeing built out there. Um, we are proposing in this application two spaces per thousand. So we're really cutting the parking in half from what would be needed. Um, and we've, we could, in our original presentation, and we can resubmit it to the board, we have a precedent slide from about seventeen or eighteen projects that are somewhat similar to the types of projects we anticipate doing here at the park. And all of these projects, whether it be um, in Marlboro, whether it be in Devons, but they're all four ninety-five sort of card of projects, um, all have anywhere from one point seven five to two point two spaces per thousand. So the, the world is generally trending that way. And I just wanted to point out that we, we are happy to do the two per thousand and if during a site plan review, we felt we could do less, but then show reserve that could be built if we needed it and design the drainage to do it, we could do that too. And that's a common opportunity that many planning boards use to, to not have a lot of um, impervious parking surfaces. So we're amenable to those kinds of ideas.
I'm assuming those were the easy ones to answer now and we'll push the other ones to um, later date?
Yeah, I mean, we, we do have, um, as far as, yeah, as far as footprint and height, we need to think about those. yeah, as far as footprint and height, we need to think about those.
Okay. Thank you for your response. I appreciate it. Um, Cindy, you had a couple more follow-up questions?
Uh, yes, thanks Rebecca. Uh, regarding the parking, um, I guess I would ask whether, um, Campanelli might consider even potentially reducing the parking further and shuttling, um, folks from a central location or one of their existing paved areas, um, for future tenants so that you're even reducing your parking more. So that's just a kind of a transportation management, um, question that, again, you don't need to answer now, but might minimize the amount of new parking needed. You could shuttle folks from existing parking lots because there is quite a bit of paved parking that's being, uh, underutilized today. Just a sort of observation on the traffic numbers, um, Bob mentioned about, I think, uh, about thirty six hundred eighty trips per day. Um, as I recall, the MIPA, um, projections from your, the original application, perhaps that was a Cisco or maybe it was Campanelli, and then an updated app, MIPA application was up to about twelve thousand trips a day. So I guess it's, um, you know, uh, I, I hope we wouldn't see that, but I think the section sixty one findings are probably based on those numbers. So I guess I'd, I'd be curious to hear, do you ever think you're going to get close to those numbers? And if not, is it time potentially to revisit some of the section sixty one findings and perhaps utilize those dollars in something a little bit more targeted? Um, I, I guess I can wait for a response. It looks like Bob's got his hands up and then I.
Go ahead, Bob.
Yeah, thank you. Um, that's a very good question. One, one of the outcomes of the more recent counts, um, confirms that even for the existing uses that are within the park, they're operating levels at levels that are below what I would call industry standards. And when I say industry standards, you know, we're working from a database that's published from counts that were conducted pre-COVID. Um, and really represent a more, uh, I guess you'd call it traditional um, set a database of how people would ordinarily choose to go to work, uh, conduct their day. Uh, and we see a downward trend in that, right? COVID certainly played a role in that. Telecommuting, uh, remote work, remote participation in meetings, um, are all factors that are an outcome of that COVID period. Um, so we do believe that the, um, trip estimates that were published and that, um, DOT relied on and that MIPA relied on, uh, in the drafting and the section sixty one finding are, are in fact conservative. Right? They're high estimates of what will likely happen. That said, um, the infrastructure that's been built along Massachusetts Avenue, uh, mo- most of that was built, um, by Cisco in anticipation of having these large, you know, tens of thousands of vehicles a day using the infrastructure, when in reality, um, we may never get there, at least not anytime soon. The only remaining component of infrastructure that needs to be built um, is some ramp improvements at the northbound on-ramp, uh, to facilitate a second left turn. And that's subject to warrants. It's subject to demonstrated need for that to actually happen. Uh, so there will be a monitoring provision that the park undertakes, um, as it moves forward from year to year, that documents what the actual ground conditions are. Uh, and what the warrants actually are at that time that would justify the need for, um, that kind of an improvement. You know, so, you know, that's the background. So you're not, um, you're not off base when you say, gee, it looks like the the trip estimates and the, um, studies were a bit high. And frankly, I think they are, uh, they're conservative.
Yeah, so I guess, um, because there was some signalization timing proposed as well, I think at the top, the, the light at the top of Swanson Road and also the, the, uh, northbound ramp traffic light, I'm just, again, wondering whether there's a re- potential to revisit with Mass DOT if those numbers are lower, that those funds could still be used for something a little bit more directed towards improving safety at, at the park, um, in one way or another. And I, I guess I should also point out, as Jeff Wyman indicated, that it sounds like Intel may be going, um, more to a full work week. And so there may be more trips coming than the thirty eight hundred or thirty six hundred that you measured. So I don't want to over, uh, assume that, that those numbers aren't going to get hit. I just wanted to, uh, you know, suggest that perhaps it's worth coming up with a immediate, a low, medium and high, uh, projection so we can understand, you know, a little more, uh, reality. And perhaps there could be some phasing going on, uh, for traffic improvements rather than the commitments made in the section sixty one findings. So just, just something for, to think about. Um, I had a couple of questions about the wastewater treatment, if I may. And, um, and the water supply, it sounds like, Russ, you've indicated that, um, the park will be served by Littleton Water. Um, I don't recall if the intermunicipal agreement that's currently been signed includes large volumes for, um, for the park at Beaver Brook. So I'd be curious if you could tell us how much water you'd be, uh, taking from Littleton Water, plus or minus order of magnitude. And then uh, also, um, when we were out there on the site visit, we did hear, um, the, um, pumping trucks, uh, at the wastewater treatment plant. And I thought with the new permit upgrades that the system would now allow to be back in operation so that you wouldn't need to pump have pumping trucks come and, and pull that water away. So maybe you could explain that. So just questions about water volumes and also um, when the wastewater treatment plant will be fully functional, so you don't have to have pumping trucks come.
Yeah, sure. Um, the, I'll, I'll answer the, the latter first. The, the upgraded wastewater treatment plant per D E P standards needs to have an active flow of forty five hundred to five thousand gallons per day. And we've been monitoring that quite closely since we've owned the park. We are getting close to that threshold in order for the wastewater treatment plant to perform properly. Um, I'm not, I'm not a septic engineer, so I can't can't give you details on that. But in order to, uh, have the the drums and the various cylinders and filtration systems work properly, it needs to have a consistent flow, low flow of, um, forty five to five thousand gallons per day. We've been averaging anywhere from thirty six hundred to about forty one hundred gallons per day. And it, and it peaks a little bit in the summertime and in the spring with the restaurant use. Um, you know, the paradigm, it's very consistent users at Metronics, T U V and Cisco. Um, Intel is, is really the largest variability, you know? They, they have a Monday and Friday remote policy, um, so it's very low on those days. And then on, um, other days, they do have, um, sort of hoteling that comes in. And then other days they'll, they'll say everybody needs to come in. So it really varies. Um, it, it's the whole sort of post-pandemic office environment. We all understand the variability in it. So that's the pumping. We're close to reaching the threshold. I think if, in an, in an ordinary environment with, with the Intel occupancy, um, not being so remote, we would already be, um, using the wastewater treatment plant the way it's been designed and the way it's been built. So, so you're correct on the pumping. As far as the well water, the intermunicipal agreement has a capacity, a maximum capacity of, like, it's like sixty four thousand or sixty five thousand gallons per day that is assigned to the park. We, we are currently using less than half of that to operate the park the way it is. Um, we've, we've spoken with Littleton about this quite a bit. There's, we would need to go through a fairly lengthy permitting process in conjunction with Littleton to increase that amount that's offered from Littleton to Boxborough. But right now, and I do have some facts and figures, I'm, I just don't have them in front of me of our actual water use, but I know it's less than half of the allocation that's been assigned to the park. The other aspect of this is if we did reach that capacity, we have our well. So our well has a, uh, public water supply, fully permitted with D P for, um, ninety two thousand gallons per day, which we, we don't do obviously, as I just specified. We could use that well if we ever did reach the sixty five thousand gallon capacity that Littleton has allocated to us. We can use that well for any additional capacity. The other piece of the, uh, little potential puzzle here is the town of Littleton has expressed some potential interest in that well. Going forward in the future, that those discussions have advanced essentially no further than the sentence I've just given to you because they just want to get their pipeline in, get things serviced, see how everything's flowing. But they're in the water business and there's not a lot of water around. And that is a very, um, interesting water source for them in the future as, as water may be needed elsewhere in Boxborough. If they, if they get over four ninety five with some water going to other locations in Boxborough, that, that well could become have a greater value to Littleton going forward.
Great. Well, thank you for all that information. I appreciate the update.
Any other questions? Cindy, you're good.
Well, isn't the capacity, the sixty five thousand capacity, the whole amount that the town of Boxborough was getting? Or is that just what the park is getting? I, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but about sixty five thousand.
I don't have the numbers in front of me. I, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I can look up the intermunicipal agreement. But that's what, that's what my memory recalls, but you know, we'll both look into it and we'll, we'll report back to you.
Good enough. Thank you.
Thanks, Cindy. Um, looking at the time, uh, are there any other board member questions? Otherwise I will, um, open it up to public comment. Okay, thank you. Um, so if any of the members of the community have any, um, public comment, uh, please raise your hand and we will take you in order as I see you. Uh, Rita, go ahead. Uh, can you state your, um, your street and your name, please?
Um, yes, Rita Capus Grossman and, um, two ninety one Depot Road in Boxborough. And, um, yes, Russ, I would just like to, um, thank Campanelli for the attention towards land conservation and, um, I'm not sure anyone's here from Harvard Conservation Trust, but I'm sure they're, they're pleased to hear your decision about that. In terms of seven hundred and eight hundred, um, I was able to participate in the walk and um, I think Rebecca captured some of the comments or concerns I would have about the development of it and to reduce. Um, clearly N H S P and Conscom and our zoning bylaws, those are the regulatory capacity. But, um, to, and it sounds like you're very sensitive to reducing the, um, impervious surfaces. I did have a question that had to do with habitat. And many of the birds that, um, are present in that area and also on the conserved land, the restricted land, um, eat bugs and insects. But there are other residents that, um, prefer a larger meal. And I'm referring to your non-rent paying tenants that, um, may invade the buildings and specifically what your approach is for managing, um, rodents. And, um, if it's the use of rodenticide or do you lean more to an integrated pest management system?
That's a question that I don't have the answer to. I know our property manager has a, a rodent, um, protection policy and I can, uh, report back to you what, what is the policy in the park? I, I don't, I don't know that offhand.
Okay, because it's, it's, if, if it's a T U V type building, I don't know to the extent there's dumpsters and things like that, but it probably wouldn't be, probably your only tenant where it's a big issue would be Crafts Food Hall because um, these critters are interested in dinner. So, um, and Crafts is a great place to go and get that. So I, um, I would be very curious about your policy on that because it will affect the larger, um, predatory birds, uh, which you do need to control the rodent population. The other thing I would advocate for, and I think that, um, John already mentioned this in terms of grassland and managing the edge, um, would be around the buildings to the extent possible. Um, any pollinator gardens and natural habitat features, um, on the developed part.
Uh, we may have, did you freeze Rita? Oh, there you are. Okay. I wasn't sure if you finished your comment.
Oh, you know what? I, um, it's now dark. Okay. Yes, I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I, uh, Russ, I am curious. So, um, the planning board knows how to get a hold of me.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks, Rita. Um, Liz Markowitz, I'm seeing you next. If you could repeat your name and your address, that'd be great. Thank you. Um, you're muted. Uh, can Liz be unmuted, please?
Go ahead. Here I am. Um, yeah, Liz Markowitz, seventy one Patch Hill Road and, um, Chair of the Boxborough Conservation Commission. And I also am, uh, wanted to say how pleased I am at how much thought has gone into, you know, conserving, uh, space and, um, or habitat as well as, uh, recreation. Um, I just have a couple of questions. When the first, when Cisco first came, they did install a security gate at the end, um, at the Littleton County Road and Beaver Brook Road that only could be accessed, um, with a swi- with a key, you know, a pass key by, um, you know, employees of the various, uh, buildings. And I'm just wondering, um, I certainly think there were fewer, uh, because I walk that parcel all the time. It is, it is a great place to bird, so I'll be, um, keeping an eye on that. But, um, I do think with the gates open, there is a lot more traffic. And I think it's actually going faster because it is, it's through traffic. They're trying to get to Littleton County Road or, or vice versa. And I'm just wondering if, if there's been any thought into resurrecting that security gate.
Um, certainly it's an interesting idea. And that would be something we would want to talk to, obviously, police and fire about. We at Campanelli don't have a preference to keep the gate open. Um, there seems to be, uh, an interest in potentially closing it and it may, it may help, um, some of the things that Rebecca had described earlier. What I can say historically, um, and we, we tried to research this quite a bit. There was never a formal agreement between Cisco and either Littleton or Boxborough on the gate. There was a lot, uh, we, we spoke with the senior property manager and facilities manager who was still at Cisco during the time of development. And the, the long and short of it is, the gate, at the time when Cisco was planning a full build, there was between twelve and fifteen thousand employees that were expected on campus. And there was agreement with Littleton to allow no more than five thousand trips through that gate. That would be really two hun- two thousand five hundred one way and two thousand five hundred the other way. Um, of course, it never matriculated to that. And Cisco had limited during its full occupancy, the badges to use the gate to two thousand employees. Um, and then police and fire. So nevertheless, there are signs saying that Beaver Brook Road, once you get past building five hundred is not a through road. There's a sign prohibiting trucks and there's a sign prohibiting traffic pass lot six hundred. Obviously signage is, is really just a small component, if, if any, to mitigating what you're describing. But I, I have, I personally and my partners have discussed this. We don't have any problems with resurrecting the use of that gate if, if it's, if the town feels it's, it's a benefit.
Great. I, I, I personally do. I don't know how the rest of the town feels, but I'm, I'm glad you're open to that because I do think there is a, there is a market difference when the gates are up. I do think it is a, um, it is pretty convenient cut through because otherwise you do have to sort of do some loops around um, Harvard or, you know, vice versa. But, uh, secondly, I, I had another, uh, question on, um, I was really pleased to see the idea of a grassland bird study for sixteen and seventeen, I, or fifteen and sixteen, I don't remember the parcel numbers. Have, um, we don't really go and look at that. I haven't been looking at that, um, because it is, you know, it's not, it's private property and I don't bird there. But has there been any documentation on any grassland, uh, birds? Is it John that is looking into that? Because, um, one of the things I do notice is we have a lot of successional, that early successional, um, Because um, one of the things I do notice is we have a lot of successional, that early successional habitat. That is currently being used by prairie warbler and blue winged warbler, as well as indigo buntings and a bunch of others. But the prairie and the indigo, the prairie and the blue wing are sort of declining in this area. And that would be, you know, I'm interested in in figuring out a way to keep that habitat. Um, viable for birds that are currently nesting um, in the area.
Yeah, there's um. There's habitat within both of the conservation restrictions, both to the north and south of Beaver Brook. Part of part of that area is good habitat for bird nesting. Um, but it's also excellent turtle nesting habitat. And they created that over twenty years ago, and it's still looking beautiful in terms of turtle nesting habitat. There's other areas on the north side of the road where um. It's not grasses per se, but it's herbaceous vegetation with limited shrubs. That certainly provides habitat for nesting for some of those species you mentioned.
Right, and they are there in fact.
Yeah, and seven hundred and eight hundred, they're mowed, they're mowed before the nesting season. They're mowed during the nesting season and they're mowed after the nesting season. They're really just. You know, poorly maintained lawns, I guess, is the best way to describe them. So they're really not high quality grasslands.
No, it's true.
And basically, something can use it, but it's not necessarily preferred. Our intention on sixteen and seventeen is to try to create something that's more of the preferred nature. Um, relative to um, grassland species.
Great. Um, well, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. I'm just kind of piggybacking off of Lisa's comment about that being a a cut through area. That from a parking, you know, driving perspective, we have our um, a number of issues piling up. When we see some kind of accident or something on four ninety five. Uh, Route one eleven really just does back up. And we had an accident just last week at the intersection of Hill and and one eleven. Just with this this backed up traffic trying to access one eleven. So um, if this is adding to it for sure, that's um, it's definitely something to consider. So I appreciate your comment there. John Lee, go ahead, please. John Lee, be unmuted, please. Thank you.
Uh, yes, John Lee from Harvard Conservation Trust, Town of Harvard. Russ, I know we got in touch with you uh, when you first bought this property. And we're happy to see that you're protecting so much of it in open space. Um, and in particular, the the parcel in Harvard. Um, we have been purchasing other properties in that area. To create a nice mass of protected open space land. Um, and I guess I just have to say, I look forward to getting back in touch with you to discuss the details of it. Again, thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, Juliette, can Juliette be unmuted? And Juliette, if you could state your name and and street?
Hi, sorry. Um, yes, my name is Rebecca Cheney and I am from Trail Ridge Way. And I'm on my daughter's iPad and I don't know how to change the name, so I apologize that it says Juliette. Um, so so I live at Trail Ridge Way, which is the neighboring property, and I'm part of the Board of Trustees at that property. Um, and my recollection, I have a question. My recollection is that. Um, as part of the Natural Heritage Review that happened a couple of years ago, and I can't remember what the permit, what was going on with the permit situation at that time. That that um, you know, that Natural Heritage was reviewing the property or reviewing their permit that had been issued a number of years prior. But my understanding from that review was the the outcome was that there was going to be. Um, that a turtle tunnel maintenance plan had been established as part of that review. This was a number of years ago. So I'm just curious, why hasn't that been implemented yet? It sounds like some things have been in terms of maintenance and uh, you know, ecological protection. Some things have been established, but the owner has not yet implemented those plans. I'm just curious if they can say why and if if they're um. Maybe their interest in implementing those things is tied to receipt of the O S C D permit? Or it's just part of being an owner? I'm just curious if there's a distinction between those two things.
Thanks, Rebecca. Would someone like to field that question from Campanelli?
Well, I'll start with it. Um, to our knowledge, there's there's been no modification or anything of the C M P. And we've been in contact with Natural Heritage over the last couple of years regarding this project. And we volunteered to create such an inspection and maintenance program for the barriers and the tunnels. And Natural Heritage acknowledged that, and we're currently working on putting together that plan for their review and approval. I don't know that such a plan currently exists um, relative to C M P.
Okay, I will. And if someone else, someone else has something to add, you know, please do. I guess my recollection is that there was such a plan. And I will look through emails or records or whatever to see if I can pull that. But I'm in, if there's nothing to say more about it, then, you know, that's fine. Um, may I say one other thing, Madam Chair? Um, I did want to respond to Ms. Snyder's, one of her opening comments was that. Our development took some eighteen or twenty years to be uh, to be built. And there were a number of special permit updates and expirations over that time period. And as a resident here and as someone who's been here for ten years, it has been nothing but a nightmare. So I want to just say it is not a model that I would recommend anybody follow. That you extend either a development period or a review period for many, many years. It has ended in litigation, bankruptcy, and many bad outcomes for all involved. So I know that this issue hasn't come up yet in the board conversation. And maybe it won't. I don't know if that's for a future conversation, but this question of the permit extension. Um, I think is very important. And I guess I'm wondering if that will be a topic of discussion at a future meeting.
I think you're muted, Rebecca. Thank you. I had a dog barking in the background, so forgive me. Um, Rebecca, thank you for your comment. I think that this is something that the board is at the board's discretion. Uh, and so I do believe, you know, if and when this moves forward, that that will be a topic of discussion for the board members.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you for your comments. Anything else or I see your hands still up. I just want to remind you. Okay, great. Any other public comments at this time? Okay, seeing none. Um. I am assuming, Alec, that we should ask for a motion to continue this to a later date.
Uh, yes, Madam Chairperson. Also, if it would please the board, I did just want to note. Um, the minutes, which hopefully you'll approve later tonight or you'll make amendments to, will eventually be incorporated as a record. Or a matter of record for these proceedings. Those are minutes of the site visit that was conducted last week. Additionally, the board received a letter from Subbury Valley Trustees outlining the potential impacts to grassland bird species and the species that are out there. I'll let the letter speak for itself. Um, further, myself and the associate planner will begin putting the draft framework together for a decision. Those are just your basic findings of fact, your list of exhibits, et cetera. Um, so that way this board can start moving towards the direction of a decision. Not to predetermine what you would do, of course, but start getting you the framework so you can start visualizing it and working towards it. Uh, and otherwise, my recommendation to the board will be to continue out until your August eighteenth meeting. Noting that the August fourth meeting is going to be quite dense, given that you have a large continuation of M B T A Communities Public Hearing. As well as your Municipal Use Code or Codes Public Hearing.
Thank you, Alec. Before I entertain such a motion, I'm going to let Joanna, you have a question or comment? Uh, can we unmute Johanna?
Thank you. Um, we appreciate the time and attention of the board. Um, I have, and I think all members of our team have been jotting down notes, questions, outstanding issues. Um, if there are any particular topics that the board would like us to cover in particular. Other than answering the handful of outstanding information requests, we would appreciate any guidance before this is continued.
Thank you very much for reminding me of something on my list to ask the board members here, Johanna. So I think that we're at a point right now where if leaving this meeting over the next few weeks. Um, if any other questions, comments bubble up from board members. Um, through you, Alec, I would say, you know, we should start to compile any additional requests for information. Just to streamline this process a little bit more for our applicant. Um, so please feel free to submit questions or comments through Alec to um, help guide the response that we're going to get from from Campanelli team. Okay? Thank you, Johanna. Anything else? Okay, you're good. Rich, did you have a comment? Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I was going to ask, where are we in the process? Do we do we like, and I understand you just invited the board to offer more comments. But I am curious, like, are we, so we're going to continue to the eighteenth? Or is there more from, like, I know that there were some discussion points. It would be, I'm just trying to understand where we are in the process, thinking with the end in mind. Alec talked about putting together some documents, like, are we anticipating one more hearing than going to deliberations? Like, where are we in the process? I guess I'm not sure right now.
Alec, do you want to speak to that? I think you were starting to outline your your hopes and dreams on this one.
Eric, so we originally speculated a four-meeting proceeding process. Um, by which at this stage you would begin having deliberations with the applicant. Um, the applicant as well would make any uh, any revisions. Um, or any offerings as part of the process. Uh, through their presentation tonight, they did start to dive into that. You heard them offer certain donations, whether that monetary or land to the town, as well as starting to anticipate out what some of that yield would be from a from a tax standpoint. Um, the intent of beginning to draft a decision is so that this board can start discussing whether that be conditions. Uh, formal findings of your decision process, uh, so that you can start moving towards a formal decision. Um, in an ideal world, I'd love to get that at your next meeting. Uh, but I understand that you and the applicant may need to work out additional items, so I always leave that to your discretion.
Okay.
Thanks for your question. Okay, great. Cindy, you had a comment?
Uh, yeah, I just, I did send Alec a couple of questions to forward on um, to Campanelli. Uh, so I put them in writing just to make sure that they were documented. And I had one additional, the two I had asked about at the sidewalk, one had to do with the the tax uh, revenue by parcel. And it sounds like Campanelli has been pulling that together, so I appreciate that. Um, I also asked about the solar facility and put some sort of sub questions in about in and around that. So I don't know if Alec has forwarded that to you. Um, the third item that I asked for some more information about is the calculation of floor area ratio. Um, because we don't quite know, um, the, well, the current building heights, ceiling heights, and also future building and ceiling heights. Um, it's hard to understand for me to to be able to calculate floor area ratio. So my request was that if Campanelli could prepare some kind of a table identifying how they're calculating floor area ratio based on on that. Because I think, you know, any any permit, special permit we would grant would have to include dimensional requirements. So I didn't want to ask specifically for the calculation of floor area ratio. Because they they did propose a dimensional table in one of their packages. So I just want, letting the board know, those are three questions that I have asked for more information on. Um, and then just to the prior public commenter's point, I think there was some discussion in the M E P A process during two thousand and three about natural heritage. And I tried to do a quick search, and it looked like there was just a commitment to continue conversation with Natural Heritage about the Conservation Management Plan. Um, but I didn't see any specific documentation saying they were going to. Uh, do it or implement it right away, but just converse with Natural Heritage. But if Ms. Cheney wants to review the M E P A documents, there might be something else in there that that I didn't see just at first glance. So thanks.
Thank you, Cindy. Um, okay, I'm not seeing any other hands versus, so if we want, someone wants to entertain a motion or make a motion, I should say. To continue to August twenty, August eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll move. Seven oh five P M.
At seven oh five P M. Thank you.
I'll move that.
Thank you, Rich. Do we have a second?
We have to phone stuff. So we just.
Yeah, a second.
Thanks, Chris.
I think Mark meant to, he's just too far away from the mic.
Any deliberation on that motion? I'm hearing none. I'll just take a roll call on that. Cindy Markowitz.
Mark Woods, aye?
Mark White.
Aye.
Thank you. Chris Goudy.
Goudy, aye.
Uh, Rich Gisardi.
Gisardi, aye.
And Werner, aye. Thank you. Thank you so much for coming and joining us tonight again. Uh, we appreciate all the information you've been bringing forward to the the board and all the questions you've been answering for everyone in the community. So thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our next public hearing. Um, we have nine seventy-five Massachusetts Ave, site plan review and stormwater permit. Um, in accordance with M G L Chapter forty A, the Boxborough Zoning Bylaw two point five, site plan approval, and the Boxborough Stormwater Bylaw. Um, the Boxborough Planning Board will continue a public hearing to review the application submitted by Goldsmith, Prest and Ringwall Incorporated. On behalf of the applicant, B H G one oh nine L L C, to construct an eight-unit contractor storage facility. Uh, I'm noting that Sue Carter from Places has joined us for this hearing. Um, so welcome, Sue. Thank you. Um, so let's see, who is here to make a presentation to the board?
Rebecca, I have to recuse myself from this meeting because I'm in a.
Thank you very much, Mark. I appreciate it. So Mark White is recusing himself at eight forty-nine for this hearing. Thank you. Um, so I am seeing some raised hands. Um, can, there we go. Oh, maybe not.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, good evening. Thank you.
This is Lamotif from G P R, Goldsmith, Preston, Ringwall. I'm here tonight as a representative for the applicant.
Thank you.
Um. If it's all right, everyone, I'd like to do a screen share of the revised site plan. Uh, let me see. All righty. Can everybody see the the screen here?
Yes, we can.
All righty. Um. Since I was here last, during the last meeting, we had worked with Places Associates to come up with a revised plan. And I do want to apologize, we did receive a peer review comments report from Places today. So I was not able to to work out and provide a response letter to that report.
That is completely understandable. No need to.
I'll try to, I'll try to, you know, give you a quick summary of what the, I guess, major change items that we're looking at at the site plan revision. Um, uh, first and foremost, regarding the driveway access, let me just zoom in right here. There was some discussion last meeting regarding the location of the driveway access. Um, following Places' recommendation, we had pushed the driveway access approximately fifty feet to the west. To get it further away from the intersection of Sarah's Way and Mass Ave. In doing so, what we have done is um. Align the driveway access so that if you're standing on the proposed driveway, you're not looking directly at the building. You're looking at it off to the side so that additional screening um. Uh, is provided for the front there. Um, additional, in addition to the realignment of the driveway access, we're also proposing. Apoites shown right here. So that if you're standing. So that if you're standing at the front of the driveway, you're looking at the apervites before seeing the building in the back. In addition to the driveway realignment, we also have a proposed culvert as shown right here, as opposed to the 24-inch half-barrier pipe that we had shown there before. The culvert you see over here, let me just scroll to the profile. So the aluminum arch culvert that you see meets the Mass Stream Crossing standard to provide enough openness ratio for critters and wildlife to move under, but also maintaining the capacity for the intermittent stream on-site. Going back to layout. There's a slight revision. Not, I guess not so clear as shown on the, the site plan here, but the wet basin that was proposed before has been revised to show an infiltration basin that is providing groundwater recharge to the site. And in addition, we're also providing trees along the driveway, shown here, as well as trees at the parking area at the top where the building is located. During the last meeting, we had also had some discussion regarding the abutting trees that are located on the town's property. As shown over here, we had survey crew go out there to shoot these trees and kind of documenting the size of the, the trees and their type, as well as shooting the trail path and elevation for the existing trail next door. We have revised this area to show, to show a proposed stone wall to kind of minimize the amount of cut that we're doing to this side of the site to try to protect as many of the existing trees that are on the other side, but also providing some planting to to replace the ones that we are removing in this area. There were some concern about the view from the trail that was, that we discussed last time. We provided an exhibit showing that if you're a person about six foot tall standing at the trail at approximately elevation, I believe, 362, looking towards the building. This essentially would be your view, looking through the proposed apervite right here. You know, you, obviously you can see the, the top half of the, the building, but not so much down here, just due to the fact that there's an existing stone wall right there. So these are the, let me just go back to here. These are the major changes that we talked about and went through. Unfortunately, I didn't have too much time to go over too much of the review comments that we received, but as I understand, we may potentially have to go out to do additional soil testing for the basin down here, because we don't have any test pit location shown directly inside of it. Like I said, I wish I had a little bit more time to go over the review comments, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions and, and, you know, you may have about it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. And it's, again, quite all right that you did not have a chance to respond to it. We know that we will, will likely need to continue this, but we will have another opportunity. Sue, I would like to open the floor to you if you'd like to just kind of speak to some of your overall findings regarding these, the plans set. Can Sue Carter be unmuted?
Good evening, everybody. Limhot, I think, generalized some of the, the big changes. Some of our concerns are more in the details. One of the, the things that I think we need some board input on is discussions about the landscaping to see that the board's satisfied with the screening and the areas where trees are being proposed versus the areas that are being cleared for the grading. We do still have some concerns about the pelvert crossing. Our concern is just that the entire access driveway slopes down onto 111. And our concern would be is just to make sure that we're not going to have a lot of turbulence at the inlet to that culvert that could cause the headwater to spill onto the roadway, so that would drain directly onto Mass Ave. A variety of comments, a lot of them were just going through the details and seeing the different aspects of it. And to be honest with you, I grabbed the wrong package off of my desk. I had one from last week's meeting and one from tonight's meeting, and I grabbed the wrong one. So I'm quickly summarizing, but a lot of it is just details that need to be addressed. Erosion control, other questions on the site. And if anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Sue. I, for one, wanted to thank you very much for your team's very thoughtful and comprehensive responses and assessment of this project. It's always very helpful to us. So I guess at this point, I'd love to open it up to board members to ask some questions or make comments. Just raise your hand and we'll start into this. There you go, Chris. Hi, what would you?
Yeah, I was just curious if we had looked at scheduling a site visit, because I'm just really, the, the drawings help, but I'm curious what that looks like on the backend, really, like from the conservation land.
Yeah, that's a great point. Alec, could perhaps you coordinate this with permission from the landowner? A, a team meeting?
Uh, yes, absolutely. Do you want to do another site visit outside the public hearing like we did with the last application?
Probably makes sense if we can pull the board for availability, and then we can go take a look at it very cautiously from 111, and it seems to me that maybe it, it could potentially be difficult to get into the back there. It is a beautiful hike back there, but we may be able to jump on property from the next building down, the DPW building. It's very close to the property line. I'm not 100% sure about that, but.
Well, isn't it the same owner who abuts just to the east?
It is.
If there's a way to get there, or isn't it that the trail that like the little, the stick figure was on, isn't that at the bottom of Steel Farm?
Yeah, so put your hiking boots on, so if you're ready for that, then.
I will communicate with the applicant and property owner, and we will target something for the first weekend.
That's what I'm curious about. I know it might be tricky, because if there's significant grading and things that might have to happen, it might be hard to visualize, but it's, it's harder for me to visualize with the, with the two-dimensionally, with the, with the drawing.
Perfect. Now, let's go ahead and do that. Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess my, and I was sort of.
That was my only real comment for now. I, I think it'd be helpful if, if it's feasible to, to get it to work.
Thanks, Chris. Go ahead, Rich.
Sorry. Yeah, I guess I'm still trying to.
Extra muted.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, awesome. I'm still trying to get my head around the, this, and I know there's a lot of, Sue, thank you for the detailed comments in the peer review, and I know, so I know there's still an iteration here that has to happen. But I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to get my head around, last time we were discussing the setback from Mass Ave. And I think there was some, like, you know, and the visual appearance, appearance of this on Mass Ave versus its neighbor. And I think there, there might have been some confusion. Is it setback as far? Yes or no? But then also, how does this building compare to its neighbors? And I know one is a Boxborough-owned facility, the other one is a commercial-owned facility. And when I say compare in terms of size and height, are they essentially equivalent? Or is this a larger scale, smaller scale, and then the setback similarity?
Yep. So I can answer, well, let's start with the setback. The building that you see in front of you, from this bottom-left corner to the, oh, I'm sorry, to the property line, is approximately 200 feet. For the building next door, because the face of the building aligns with the property line with next door, is approximately 280 feet. As far as the size comparison, in terms of footprint, we're looking at 10,800 square feet for the building footprint for the proposed building you see in front of you. The one next door, I believe, is smaller. I don't have the the actual square footage, but I, I know that it's smaller. I would venture to guess probably about 5,000, 6,000 square feet.
Okay, so this is roughly double approximately in terms of the square foot, the footprint.
That is correct, yep.
And then what about the height? Is it proposed at the same height? I'm sorry if there's, this data is there. I'm just high-level trying to get my head around.
Not a problem. So the height for this building is approximately 30 feet, while the one next door is probably closer to about 25.
Okay. And I guess one of the, so a question I have, Rebecca, and maybe this is something we need to discuss as a board. I know this still has to go for special permit, and I think we talked about the sequence, because the special permit, does this have to go for special permit? Is this, is there a use requirement that has to go to special permit?
There is.
For trade shop, yeah, for trade shop on, in the business district. So, and I believe that it goes to us first, and then the special permit would incorporate the site plan, which seems to me a little bit backwards, because there's a lot involved in the site plan. And if the use allowance isn't going to be granted through the special permit, then, like a lot of the work we're doing, it's kind of just a lot of work. But so the, the building, like one of the criteria in the bylaw, and this is not for the planning, well, I guess it is part of site plan, it is, it is part of the site plan, is the consistency of this building with its neighboring buildings and landscape. And, you know, it's larger, okay, and I don't know how it compares to the DPW building. And larger doesn't necessarily mean it's, doesn't, it's not consistent. But that, I think, would be also a use, that would be part of the use special permit as well. So I just, I'm trying to get my head around all this in terms of, you know, how this building compares to its neighboring buildings and how it sits in this location. And yes, there's a site plan aspect that we have to assess, and so we'll, we'll have time to do that. There's more work to be done in terms of the drawings. But then it also seems to me that it'll play a large role in the special permit, which has a higher threshold because it's a special permit, I think. So I'm just maybe more expressing sort of a, not, not as much a question, but more of like what I'm trying to get my head around here, so.
Thank you, Rich. Appreciate it. Did you have any direct questions that you needed answered on that? I, I know you're processing a little bit, but.
Yeah, I mean, maybe the, and maybe the question is to, to, to the, the applicant is, is there, you know, what, what is the level of flexibility around, you know, this building relative to the neighboring building? And is, is, are you locked in on the size and the height and all those aspects to it? Or is there flexibility if, like, the, you know, we sort of start to come to the conclusion that, well, maybe this isn't fitting in with the neighboring buildings?
I guess I can speak more about the flexibility of the, the footprint than the number of units. So as I understand it from the landowner and applicant, is that the square footage of the proposed building, as well as the number of rental units, eight is the magic number that needs, that we need to have in order to make this project financially feasible. It is a tough site to develop. You know, plenty of ledge, quite a bit of grading, as well as, you know, the stormwater requirement associated with it. So, you know, I'm sure whatever number that he has in front of him, you know, points to this size of building, the number of rental units being eight, to make it financially viable. That's all I can really say.
Yeah, okay, no, I, I appreciate the, the response. And so they're all about equal, so you take the square footage and you divide it by eight, and you're pretty much, that's the size of a unit. I know we were talking about them as it, but this is footprint we're talking about, so. They're all equal. Yeah, okay. Thank you. I'm good, Rebecca, for now.
Thanks, Rich. Any other board questions? Go ahead, Cindy.
Yeah, I, I think Sue Carter raised a bunch of issues that I do want to see sort of the response to before we get too deep on this. I know one of them had to do with landscaping. I could say just generally speaking, I probably would want to see a lot more screening of the building from the driveway. That, just at first glance, but I think you're required to prepare a landscape plan in, in more detail, so I'll wait to hear that response. I believe that the last meeting I asked about the fire, whether the fire department had weighed in regarding the turning radius. I did see that you submitted a turning, what do you call it, the, the map of the, of the proposed turning, but I'd like to hear the fire department's weigh in on that, so I haven't seen that in the package yet. So I'm hoping we will hear from our fire department about access and the driveway and such. And then the other comment, I think we had made last time, was, you know, was there any, has there been any additional consideration about the color and style of the building? I mean, seeing anything in the packet this week on that, but certainly happy to wait for another hearing if the applicant intends to address that. And to Rich's point about the amount of space, while, you know, it may make financial sense to have eight units if those eight units aren't filled. You know, I am concerned that we already have some trade unit buildings in town that aren't filled and haven't been for some time, so I just, while it on paper might make sense financially that if you're, all eight units are being rented, but this is a lot of site work to be done, and I, I do have concerns that if some of those units don't get rented, then, you know, whether that's an abatement on town and, and the town is now faced with a, a building that might not be compatible to Rich's point with the, with the surrounding area, and they have some vacancies. So those are just my concerns as of now. Thanks.
Thanks, Cindy. Rich, did you have more questions?
Yeah, I had one thought as, sorry, I was listening to you, Cindy, but I was, I was thinking as that was happening. So a sidewalk that Chris mentioned, I think, is important. We should do that. But one, like, when you talk about seat, building height, and that, I'm, I'm, I've got that trail image, and I don't know if it's worth putting back up. And I don't know what grade that trail's at. But if what would be interesting is like, I'd really, and I know sometimes, you know, balloon tests are done or whatever, but you know, what, this property is a budding steel farm in the adjacent municipal parcel. If you were up on the hill at Steel Farm with the tree clearing, et cetera, would you be able to see this building? The top of this building? And I, I don't know that we would know that unless we knew the, the different elevations and, and actually did a test, but to me, that's an important thing to understand, like, you know, would you be able to see this from like Steel Farm, from the top of that hill? I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, but that question occurred to me. I don't know how we resolve that. I don't know if doing a balloon height test is something we can do, if it's in the cards, but that, to me, is a question.
I bet we could test that out pretty easily, Rich. Just, I don't know, thinking out loud, but with just a little bit of research and study on this. But it's a very good point.
Yeah, I'll, I'll kind of echo that point, and I, I think, I think what would probably help the most is starting with the, the sidewalk. As I mentioned before, the site itself has a lot of mature trees. A- as I mentioned before, the site itself has a lot of mature trees. Um, you know, they, they go quite, quite high, and because we're cutting down approximately sixteen feet from the peak of the knoll, the existing knoll on site to get to the building. You know, essentially the building is only coming up about fifteen feet from the peak of that knoll. You know, fifteen feet in comparison to the nearby mature trees that are eighty, hundred feet. That might get us a pretty, uh, good idea, at least to start. To kind of start thinking about it. If we want to take a look at, you know, any location in terms of elevation wise about the abutting property, we can certainly do that as well. Um, but I, I would recommend just starting with the, um, the sidewalk, just so that we can get an idea. Because just being out there a few times, you know, you can kind of see the scale of the, uh, the nearby trees. Going back to what, um, Cindy had commented on, I just want to address a few of those things if I could. The, the easiest one being the, uh, being, being the use of, you know, the, the building itself, building trade and the vacancy that you see around, around town. The, the, um, the information that was told to me by the applicant is that he's done, um, market research and from the people that he's spoken with, he feels comfortable that he should be able to fill all eight units, um, without any, without much concern, um, barring any, you know, future unforeseen financial happening in the world. So I'll leave it at that. The second point that Cindy brought up regarding the landscaping, um, I, I think she's right, and you know, I'll echo what Sue said is that we probably do need some direction regarding the landscaping plan. As Sue highlighted in the report, we do not provide, uh, landscaping plan, a standalone landscaping plan um, by stamp, um, from a landscape architect. Um, we generally feel that the amount of landscaping that we're providing add to the shade of the existing trees, all trees, that is projecting onto the property. But if the board feels that that's insufficient, we can certainly reach out to a landscape architect to provide a standalone landscaping plan.
I would definitely recommend, um, following that, um, comment from, um, places. It should be stamped and prepared by a registered landscape architect. If there are no other board member comments, I'll roll into some of mine. One was, um, I had asked about, um, an area calculation for the limit of work. Do we have that number? Um, so the, I, I saw the breakdown of impervious areas and building coverage, but overall uh, limit of work, limited disturbance?
Yes. The total limit of disturbance is approximately two point five acres, two point four being the, um, dashed line that you see that surrounds the, uh, the, I guess, clearing and limited disturbance. And another point one associated with the well and replication area, um, over at this area, I can scroll to.
Perfect, thank you. Um, I appreciate that. Um, Cindy asked about the fire trucks, so you're working on, um, uh, getting a review with the fire department or weigh in from the fire department, um. Uh, noting that there's, and you, you said it yourself, there's a fair amount of ledge out on this property, so it sounds like, uh, we could probably expect a fair amount of blasting uh, to accommodate this proposal. I'm curious if we can get a few, uh, site sections prepared for this, uh, property, because there's a pretty substantial grading effort taking place on this, and I think it would be a useful tool for, you know, the board to kind of understand what some, you know, what's happening topographically out here, because it's, it is a pretty substantial grading, um, effort, and they don't necessarily need to be, you know, fully vetted out, but some simple, um, section cuts through, through the proposal. Um, you started to do it with your, uh, rear elevation, uh, at the, um, uh, the, the walk, uh, the pathway, right, that's, that's very helpful, and I guess that's what got me thinking that maybe it might be useful to do that and a couple other strategic locations, uh, just to kind of understand what's happening with the grading, um, as well. Uh, because it's, it feels like there's a fair amount of earthworks happening on the property, so it's, it's a suggestion. Um, I would love to, for this elevation, since you have it pulled up, um, you have a graphic of a, of a tree up there, but there are some pretty substantial pines, um, and, um, trees that are, uh, occurring along that, um, that, uh, town-owned land. Um, yeah, thank you. It looks like deciduous as well. I appreciate that you, you have those flagged on the map, um, so. Uh, it'd be interesting to know what their kind of canopies are really, how far they're extending out into the cut line, um, because uh, you know, canopies are reflective of cr- critical root zone beneath, so I, I think, um, you know, Places has made a comment about understanding like how we're impacting, um, those trees specifically. I definitely have a concern about, you know, when you do large clearings, um, trees that have never been exposed to heavy wind loads, um, or, you know, microbursts and storms all of a sudden become very, very, um, uh, susceptible to, to falling, uh, just because they've never dealt with that, those kind of conditions. And all this, and all of a sudden, then they're exposed, so I think making sure that any of those trees, uh, are given their best shot, and it's both for, uh, the town, but also for your own conditions out there as well. Um, I'd hate to see anything get blown over, um, because we've impacted it too heavily on that side. Let's see, uh, Sue brought up the, the site plan regulations regarding trees greater than fifteen inches. I know that you will probably answer that in your next round of questioning. And we talked about preparing a, a proper landscape plan by a registered landscape architect. I, you know, I, I think though it was a reasonable, uh, approach, but I would love to see, um, a separate plan altogether that's not inclusive of the landscape, uh, the layout and materials and, or the utilities, um, and not the grading plan as well, and you have a lot of information to show on those plans already. Um, but, um, it would be, um, good to show like, uh, existing canopies that we're going to, I know you have edge of, of canopy, but it'd be good to know what is intended to protect and, and, and in place, um, and pres- and preserve. So I'd love to see like a, a tree protect, protection, um, layout, you know, for, um, fencing, you know, as part of that. Um, uh, it would be good to have that on the plan as well, and, um, details about what that looks like, what is that detail of, of a tree protection fence, or some, what, what are your mitigation efforts in order to make sure that nothing encroaches beyond those limit of, um, work? Let's see, the plan, um, we, we know we're going to have somebody work on that, um, additionally, but, uh, generally, I think, um, the, the callouts were a little light, um, the, um, I would love to see all the plants, if I could give you a recommendation, I'd love to see all the plants go native um, on, on that plant list that you're, um, showing, um, and I know we don't have perennials or, um, uh, seed mixes necessarily shown other than the restoration area, but, um, th- those I'm, I'm not specifically speaking to this, but of the greater lands, um, site, it should be native trees and shrubs and perennial uses, um, for that. Yeah, okay, terrific, thank you. Um, and then, um, the, um, oh, there's also a requirement, we need, we need to see your planting method details, so, and specifications for that. I think Sue's team might have also said that in her, um, assessment. The plants that are being proposed are very, very small, and they're not going to be doing a lot for a very long time. Uh, so when I see a waiver request for, uh, minimizing trees, I wonder if we can either consider, um, you know, upping the size of the, the plant material that's being proposed. Um, I'm, I suspect that your landscape architect to be will, will probably, um, relay out the, the, the plantings to better, um, accommodate the building, um, screening and such, but, um, so we'll, I, I won't go much further than that on that topic, because I'm sure we're going to see a revised version. Let's see, um, let's see, oh, the, the sizing of containers, I'm sure they're going to address this too, but, um, it, and like for shrubs, it shouldn't be by, um, si- like height, it should be container size, that's just an industry standard. And then I guess when I look at, I, I see the effort to try to provide screening, and you mentioned it for the building, um, and that location for those evergreens that you're currently showing in this, um, image. Um, those are fourteen feet lower than the parking lot elevation, uh, and then you have a thirty-foot-high building on top of that, so I would very much encourage, uh, screening to take place up at the higher elevation, if you can flip back to your other plan, your planting or your grading, whichever one it was. Uh, so just, there's an
Along here.
Yeah, it looks like that would do a whole lot more for you, um, to, to screen up on that area, um, than at the lower level. Um, I think the building will be seen as a bit more unsightly than, than your drainage, um, areas, your infiltration zones, so um, putting it up higher is going to get you more bang for your buck, right, and, um, and provide a lot more screening from the street.
Definitely take that into consideration.
Thank you. Let's see, restoration plan, and I know this is outside of our purview, but it has no reference to any shrubs that are being shown in that plan, um, so just that I could see, I didn't see it in there.
Let me see.
I saw shrub shown, but, um, they, it, I didn't find where it was called up. There's a reference number one to look at something, but it doesn't, I don't know where that is.
I believe that's in the report that was, um, provided, um, but we can certainly add, add it on to, uh, the sheet as well.
Okay, thank you, and I'm sorry if I, I missed it.
No problem.
Uh, and then Sue, I just had a question for you about, if you can go back to the plan, there's, um, there's snow storage being shown, uh, yes, uh, at the curve in the driveway along where the three trees are, um, and there's a Cape Cod berm there. Is there any concern about, um, damage to that Cape Cod berm with plow trucks and maybe, uh, redirecting water? Um, if that should happen? Sue, I'm asking you.
There you go. Now I'm unmuted, okay. The concern is more that, uh, if we have a heavy rain, that water's going to come flying down and will right now it's counting on a cross slope to get into the drainage, so my concern was keeping it from, as it goes around the curve, keeping runoff from bypassing and going over the shoulder and running off. In terms of plow damage, you're going to get it anyways with, um, you know, Cape Cod berm and the plows, uh, my concern is, is that we're not acknowledging snow storage along the shoulders of the driveway there. And then the area of snow storage is up, up at the top of the driveway at that first bend. While it seems like a logical place to plow, my concern is its proximity to the well and the fact that that snow will not go through any of the treatment designed for stormwater runoff. It will simply go overland into the wetlands.
Thank you for your feedback. I appreciate that. Um, that is my last comment, um, right now. Are there any other board comments? Otherwise I will open it up to public comment. Okay, so I'm seeing none. Um, if any members of the public would like to make a comment or a question, uh, please raise your hand and I'll call on you in order. I am seeing none. Um, so again, Alec, I think we need to make a motion to, um, continue this public meeting. Do we have a date for that at this point?
Um, so we'll note, Madam Chairperson, so for, for this being a site plan approval application, um, there does need to be the consent of the applicant as well for continuation. Lomot, I assume you and your client would appreciate, uh, the additional time to make additional revisions to the plan set, so would you accept a continuation to August eighteenth at seven thirty-five P M?
Yes, that's not a problem.
All right, Mary will process the paperwork, and we will get that over to you this week.
Thank you, Alec, for keeping us honest, and thank you for accepting that extension. We appreciate it. Terrific. Uh, would anyone like to make such a motion, uh, to, um, to continue this hearing until eight eighteen, two thousand twenty-five?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Seconded, okay, made, uh, motion made by Rich, seconded by Cindy, um, in the order that I
Question, Rebecca. Uh, and not, not a debate to the motion, but relative to that site, uh, the site walk, uh, there's a lot of different aspects to the drawing we talked about, like the height of the building is one thing, but like I think understanding like the limits of land clearing, um, you know, where the, you know, approximately where the building would be situated, and what that, you know, land adjustment would look like, just having, you know, some stakes out there with some marker points so that we know what we're looking at would be helpful.
That's a great, um, great suggestion. Um, would that be a possibility to put in like four stakes of the building location and maybe the, um, I don't know, the extent of the paving up there?
Definitely. I think what we'll have, uh, a range is that we'll do the four corners of the building, um, barring any location that may hit the, uh, the ledge outcrop out there, um, as well as a couple more stakes for the center line of the driveway as you're coming into, from the road, as well as probably a few more, uh, where the infiltration basin is going in just because I know that I might potentially have to go out there to do soil testing anyway, um, so we'll have all those, um, outlined.
But the limit of clearing, good to know, yep.
That's very helpful. Thank you very much for doing that. It's appreciated. Any other, um, discussion? Okay, um, so we have a motion in a second, so, uh, in order, as I see you, Rich, would you like to make a Okay, thank you, Chris Doughty.
Doughty, I.
Cindy Markowitz.
Mark Witz, I.
And Werner, I. Uh, thank you so much for coming out this evening and presenting to us and, uh, fielding all of our questions. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you, you too. Okay.
Rebecca, do you need me for anything else, or am I good?
You are dismissed, Sue. Thank you so much for everything. Have a great night.
Okay, good night, everyone.
Okay, all right, next up, um, okay, where are we? Nine thirty. Um, I know that we're going to, we're going to next talk about, or open the public hearing for, um, the MBTA Communities Overlay Zoning District, and I know, uh, well, uh, let me just read it. In accordance with the MGL Chapter forty A, Section Five, the Boxboro Planning Board will conduct a public hearing pursuant to consider the following, um, proposed zoning bylaw amendments. Uh, A, adoption of an overlay district, uh, to comply with the MBTA Communities Act of two thousand twenty-one. B, further amendment of the bylaw to comply with the MBTA Communities Act of two thousand twenty-one. So with that, I know that Alec, um, is trying to keep us on time, but he is, um, he, uh, noting that Mark White joined, rejoined the meeting at nine thirty. Um, Alec is going to try to give a, a brief presentation to the board, um, and so we can begin the discussion, and, um, yeah, go ahead, Alec, turn it over to you.
Awesome. Thank you very much, Madam Chairperson. So, uh, as you noted, I am going to keep things fairly brief tonight. Um, I do have some headway and some updates to provide from your past working session, but predominantly tonight serves as an introduction to the public hearing process specifically for this work. Um, I will also at the end outline next steps, the very specific work that is still to be done as part of the process. And this board, uh, ahead of your August fourth meeting, can anticipate having draft language in the form of a warrant article, um, and I'm hopeful that after tonight, we can begin to narrow further our potential locations so that that can be an ultimate decision you make at your next meeting. I will have multiple stopping points throughout, uh, but those will mostly just be for me to pause, to catch my breath. So please bear with me, uh, do your best to keep questions to the end, unless it's something that, uh, that must be addressed at the moment. Otherwise, I will kick us off. And while I do admit this looks very similar to most of my presentations on the topic, this is a slightly different presentation. I keep updating them, and you can always keep track. track based on the date I keep down here. All right. So as stated, we'll go through a brief introduction of the law. I will outline the public engagement that's been done, noting this for many is the first time they've heard it, the proposed districts as they stand today, and then we'll get into a discussion on dimensional regulations, which is the bulk of the work that is still yet to be done and where myself and the town's consultant need the most direct feedback. The chairperson has already read the hearing notice. I pause here only for it to be there for anyone who might be, might be impaired. And from here, we'll directly lead into an introduction of the law. So this board has heard me give this spiel many times, but I will give it a little bit slower tonight. In 2020, the state through bipartisan legislation passed the MBTA Communities Act, which was eventually signed into law in January of 2021. The state was identifying a crisis, as they called it here in Massachusetts, specifically a housing crisis. Notably, the population most affected by this, as they noted, was the oldest of generations as well as that middle generation, the real workforce generation as well. And that was particularly concerning, given that it ultimately affects our economy and the way we live here in Massachusetts throughout. Their solution was what they called the MBTA Communities Act, a law which targets multifamily housing zoning code to be allowed by right in those communities that are directly served or adjacent to MBTA and other rapid transit resources. Ultimately, we are one of 175 cities and towns that are affected by it, and they're attempting to address what they call missing middle housing. You can see on the left-hand side of the screen, a couple examples of what that looks like, a nice visual that's prepared by Optico's back in 2020 at the start of this process. We here in Boxborough have our own unique requirements for it. We often hear the criticism that this is a one-size-fits-all attempt, but ultimately each community is evaluated and judged on a formula so that it's not a flat rate number, community by community. Instead, Boxborough is what's deemed an adjacent small town. That's the smallest of designations, notably because we don't have a station in town. We have a line that passes through us and two adjacent stations, but a formula based on our current housing stock, our population, and our status of an adjacent small town spits out this unit capacity. Effectively, we have anywhere in town to be selected to develop a zoning district that allows multifamily housing at a rate of 15 units per acre, and the capacity, so to speak, is 118 units. Now, capacity is an odd word to use here because this isn't a construction exercise. We don't actually have to build 118 units of housing. We don't even have to zone for 118 units of new housing. We, as a community, are allowed to leverage different resources as they stand today. There are certain clear parameters that you can't include things like conservation land, land that is, that's encumbered by wetlands or other protected resources, anything that's deed restricted so that it can't become housing, can't be included in your district, but otherwise we can pick anywhere in town. We'll look at a map later on. That's quite a lot of land here in Boxborough that's excluded from our process, but you're also allowed to count existing housing stock, land that's already been built and already been developed, which, as you'll see through one of our proposals, is a methodology that we do explore. Now, we haven't frequently touched upon what happens to those communities that don't comply with the law, but it's important that we understand the repercussions of our actions should the Boxborough choose not to comply with this zoning exercise. At the top of the page, I've listed five grant programs, four of which we have actually received in the past several years. Notably, this is several hundred to millions of dollars worth of funding that potentially would be borne back onto the taxpayers if we did not receive funding through these resources. Additionally, there's discretionary funding. And so we'd always been warned that there would be additional funds beyond just the grant programs, but funding that we rely on and other communities rely on for schools, roads, bridges. I've even most recently seen MBTA compliance be built into police and fire grants where we're providing simple apparatus for breathing. And ultimately, communities that fail to comply will see, will see enforcement brought forward by the Attorney General. The Attorney General will bring suit to bring a community into compliance, in which point the community loses control of its ability to select the location. And at that time, the Attorney General will presumably seek a location that would allow for new construction rather immediately. So leading up to this public hearing, there's been a lot of work that's actually gone into the process. I'm going to outline a lot of that here. So back in January 2023, we hit our first major milestone. The town became into the status of interim compliance. We submitted a simple compliance plan that did not dictate a specific location, a district or any concepts, but rather what it did is it's mapped out a process that would get us to today and eventually to our compliance later this year. For over a year, myself and other town staff were receiving training. And ultimately, we used this time to also apply for grant funding. Thus far, this exercise has cost no actual town dollars. We have been able to rely on grant funding for consulting services, technical assistance, and additionally, the resources of CHAPA and MAPC, MAPC being our consultant, to support the town's work throughout this process. With our consultant in hand, or consultants in hand, we kicked off in May of 2024 with a public information session, which was then followed by the formation of an advisory group and several engagement sessions. I'll go over specific sessions in just a moment. I want to highlight that in this visual, you can see we're now at a stage of what I refer to as narrowing the districts and public outreach. So this is different than public engagement. At this stage, where we're starting to actually conceptualize districts and look at locations, we're now preparing exercises where we speak directly to those property owners, renters and citizens that live in the areas that this is being proposed for. Just last week, I hosted two information sessions for the residents of the Meanmore condominiums as well as renters along Hill Road. We did not see high turnout at all. We had quite a low turnout for that despite mailing and door knocking to over 120 residents in this case. It was rather unfortunate, but we're already coming up with new ways and new approaches to reach that community. Even for those who just don't want to hear about the law, my goal is to be that annoying fly on the wall that won't go away until you hear this whole spiel because I'm getting rather good at giving it. So a quick outline of the various community outreach methods we've put into this. For some, this will be a reminder. For others, this will be new information, so please bear with me. In March of 2022, the previous town planner gave a presentation to the planning board and the select board. That was followed in May of 2024 by another information session where a consultant came and presented to the town to remind everybody what the law was, why the law is important and why compliance is important. From August through current, we had the 3A Advisory Group, which hosted more than 10 meetings and various exercises. This included a public mapping session in November of 2024, a community survey in January of 2025. And we ultimately concluded, so to speak, this process in June of 2025, just a month ago, with site visits of the top three leading locations as well as a spot survey at Pfeiffer's Day. So now we're going to dive into those proposed districts. We're going to get into the nitty gritty, the locations that are being evaluated. I will note that some of these districts have emerged as being noncompliant, one of which we'll actually talk about tonight. And additionally, we'll talk about other areas that the town has, or members of this board and other boards have asked for additional investigation of. Throughout the 3A Advisory Group process, we worked off of performed data, the mapping session, the survey results, and we worked with our consultant to develop a variety of different districts that could comply with the law in different ways. What you see here is those draft recommendations, which were first developed between January and February of 2025. The number shown in pink and the district boundary shown in pink is how you identify the district. And then the number shown in blue is the draft ranking it was given by the advisory group. The advisory group has since narrowed this resource down further, but I want to highlight briefly what went into this process. So you'll see that we started with a heat map. This heat map was developed using the mapping session where you see the green dots. That shows a conglomeration of areas that participants believed would be suitable for Boxborough. We also utilized an excluded land map. So the way you interpret and read this map is that any land shown in yellow likely cannot be included in our district, or if you do include it, it won't count towards our capacity, that equation we have to reach. As you can see here, this was a bit of an uphill battle. There's a lot of land in Boxborough that is excluded and would not comply with the law. Nonetheless, we worked hard to find the land that would. And ultimately, our consultant presented what's referred to as a suitability map. So this suitability map is a tool developed by the consultant. It is not to say what is suitable for Boxborough, but the way to interpret this map is the darker blue parcels correlate with parcels of the land that would be suitable for compliance. Now, I'll note, suitability does not directly correlate to buildability, but it is a good measure if a parcel itself is undeveloped. So for example, if you see a piece of land that you know doesn't have anything on it, and it's also dark blue, then that likely could be built if it was zoned under this exercise. So jumping back to our draft recommendations, you'll see that we had districts one through eight. District eight was very shortly after development excluded. You can see that the bulk of it is shown in yellow, and it ultimately was determined that there was not enough eligible land in the district to make it feasible. I will note district number six, which many are familiar with, is 72 Stowe Road. While that is shown as yellow, its status as ownership by the housing board actually would make it compliant. We'll go into a little later on what specifically would have to be done for that recommendation to remain compliant and the immediate actions that would have to come of it. But we'll start by looking at district one. Proposed district one, as you can see here, is located at the peak of Hill Road. If we think back to the original map, this is at the crest of Hill Road. You'll see Leonard Road located here, a small cul-de-sac that leads out to the Meanmore condominiums. You'll see four six-unit apartment buildings, a single-family home and an undeveloped lot to the rear. You'll see that this district splits the undeveloped lot, and additionally, it includes what appear to be two undeveloped lots in the rear, but these are in fact the utilities, most notably the leaching field for Meanmore condominiums. This is what we refer to as the hybrid approach to compliance. So this is a two-part process. We both have to draft regulations, but we also geographically have to select a location. Under this hybrid approach to compliance, the town, the town seeks to comply with the law by leveraging existing construction today while also leaving room for future growth, what I term as to be medium to long-term growth with an opportunity for short-term change, but at this time, we don't expect any immediate change. In fact, in speaking with the landowners, none have indicated to me that they are interested in immediate change or immediate new construction. I can't predict the future. I can't say that priorities won't change, but at this time, they don't anticipate taking action in the immediate future, even if this district is selective. However, what I'll note is there would be the opportunity for increased density along Hill Road and the availability for new construction in this area should they so choose. Also notable, this exercise conserves existing multifamily housing and ensures the ability for the Meanmore condominiums to be rebuilt in the future. We'll note this town on multiple occasions has seen multifamily housing unfortunately subject to natural disaster. And here in Boxborough, that means that those houses are then subjected to an arbitrary special permit process. This would make the right to rebuild by right. If we selected this location, there would be the opportunity to leverage future grant funding for sidewalks, bike lanes, traffic calming and rapid transit, that being due to its direct location to the Littleton train station, which is located off map. It's about one mile north of the site. And additionally, Littleton does provide public water up to the town line and to the Meanmore condominiums. District number six also emerged as a high contending district. While we have not mapped out a unit capacity for this one, we are confident that it could comply with the law if it was, if it was so zoned. This was specifically selected based on the housing board's control of the site, which ultimately gives the town control over the final look and aesthetic for anything that's proposed on the site. Additionally, it's access immediately along 111, which includes our existing rapid transit route. The Boxborough connects MART bus service, which provides access directly to the South Acton train station. A site like this would be immediately accessible as well as its proximity to the village center of Boxborough, which the Economic Development Committee and its working group have been working hard to look at and consider potential new development as well as leveraging the existing construction there for a more vibrant commercial center. In the planning world, we're all very aware that the most immediate way to infuse commercial growth is, or commercial revitalization, is through a direct infusion of people, consumers who will eventually leverage those goods and services. If the town were to select district number six, the expectation would be that the housing board would have to issue a request for proposals in short order. What that means is that the housing board would have to demonstrate shortly after drafting of the zoning that they are taking efforts to develop this parcel. Unlike what I said earlier in the process and unlike district one, which has no town-owned land, if the town chooses to zone land that is owned by the town, including land owned by the housing board, it needs to be able to demonstrate that it is taking conscious steps. A part of this law typically revolves around no municipal property being included in the district, that being the Attorney General wants to avoid and the, and the state wants to avoid towns zoning land that can't be built or zoning land that the town chooses never to build. While there would, while they likely would consider this land as eligible, we would have to take steps in the short term to actually construct new housing on the site. Now, this also poses a challenge, and I do feel compelled to share this with the board. We have it under good advice from the Housing Board chair, from the Housing Board, that this site could not be fully developed to the capacity they would need to reach. I am waiting to get an appointment with the Executive Office of Housing Livable Communities and to discuss whether that would be a hindrance and ultimately lead to the reversal of a compliance status if we did proceed with this site. That's information that I assume you, as the board, need to know before you can consider this thoroughly, but I will make every effort to get that answer to you by your August 4th meeting. The consultant and I do not have a firm answer to this question, unfortunately. It's a challenging one, and really it goes over our head. We have to talk to the folks that dictate our compliance at a later date in time. To emphasize some opportunities that come with this site, so much like the other site, there is always opportunity for existing future grants. What I'll note is that rapid transit is already available to this site today. The Boxborough connects route, which currently serves 300-plus people per month. That already runs along Mass Ave. It would be a slight detour off-site to be able to reach this location and provide direct access. So that means you would be able to consider reduced parking requirements for the site and potentially we could incentivize development of the site. But we have for many years talked about sidewalks and traffic calming measures along Stowe Road. Development of an MBTA Communities District in this area would allow us to access state funding to make exactly those types of improvements along Stowe Road leading up to Mass Ave. Overall, that would also strengthen our ability to seek complete streets funding in the neighborhood, but you can see here the conceptual district mapped out. There are no encumbering factors to this lot, to the best of our knowledge and understanding of it, and our, and our consultants does stand ready to start modeling compliance here. What I will note is we do need to know a little bit more information regarding dimensional regulations, where the board wants to go. I will give you some draft dimensional regulations tonight that you can sit on and mull over, but those are more modeled after the proposed district one with great flexibility allowed there. From there, I'll ask for your feedback at the next meeting. And if you choose to proceed with district six, then we will ultimately bring those back and remodel to ensure those would fit here as well and offer suggestions where it would not. Further, it was asked that the board continue exploration of district number seven. Now, unfortunately, I have bad news here. I had started preparing a site visit. I had started walking through what would be a preferred layout here, but at this time, I'm actually recommending that the board abandon exploration of district number seven. This district has always puzzled me a little bit, but nonetheless, the state data showed we would be eligible. We could pursue it. But the land you'll so, you'll show with the hash marks here was recently accepted by the town. Hence why it's been puzzling me for the last couple months. Why is this an eligible piece of land? Well, as it turns out, the state data at the time it was first pulled was not up to date with this. And the state data does not reflect that the parcel shown with hashing is actually deed restricted for recreation use. Now, a lot of us will remember the town meeting article where the town ultimately did accept this site. Um, and where we accepted it under the understanding it would be for recreational use. But I have done my own independent research, further reviewed the deed itself. The deed is very clearly dictating, uh, recreational use. And so we can confidently say that, uh, the largest lot in this district would not comply with the law. Now, if the board wants us to continue exploring this site, we could start gerrymandering the districts. We could start reconfiguring the lot layout. Uh, but I'll note where we are getting later in the game here. Um, my recommendation is to abandon exploration of this lot so we can further focus on district one and district six. Um, nonetheless, that is a decision left to the discretion of the board. Why this district was, uh, recommended for further exploration, it is, uh, the closest district recommended. Uh, that would be within proximity of the Acton Station, the South Acton Station. It's approximately two and a half miles, a little greater away. Um, there would be opportunity for future grant funding, much like with the other districts. However, uh, its distance from the station would limit, uh, the scope and how far we could go. Additionally, uh, a district like this, we would really be relying on Acton to being willing to install. Uh, any infrastructure leading from this district to the station. Uh, and so that would limit our capacity with how far it actually has to go. Um, nonetheless, we are, uh, within range of rapid transit at this location as well. The same Boxborough connects route that goes by, uh, the Stowe Road parcel. Also comes down to the food pantry, which is located just across the street from this location. And it regularly services, uh, Summer Fields, uh, which is located just to the north of the hashed parcel here. All right, we're nearing the home stretch here, everybody. Bear with me. We're gonna start talking about dimensional regulations. This is some of the very important work that you as the planning board almost exclusively has to do. Um, unlike the advisory group where we were focused on the geographic task at hand. You as the board are more the experts when it comes to dimensional regulations. And so as such, we've started to model out what these could look like. So, uh, take a look at this table and take it into consideration specifically for district number one. Um, that's not to say we can't still apply this to something like district number six or as district number seven. But this first batch was modeled, um, in concept with district number one. Now, there's a lot of flexibility here. You can see that we actually have, uh, we have twenty-foot setbacks in any direction. That's reasonable, but those numbers can be played around with. Uh, we right now have a modeled parking requirement of two spaces per unit, which admittedly I, I think is a little high. We know that for a fact, multifamily housing does require less parking than, uh, single-family homes do. Um, and you can see we've currently modeled a maximum lot coverage of seventy percent with a minimum open space requirement of thirty percent. Now I will really pause here because this is all with only modeling a two-story height requirement. In many districts, we allow greater than two-story height requirements. And so if you wanted to increase the height requirement to three stories, you could immediately explore increasing your setback requirements. And increasing your minimum open space requirement. But these are stages where I need direct input from the board. The consultant put this first draft together for us, just to give us a sense of how much flexibility we have to play around with. That's due in large part to the physical size of district number one, which as I said, this was first developed based on. Um, you'll note that district one geographically is larger than what we need. But that's to ensure compliance. It includes the, the area of infrastructure and utilities. Um, and it guarantees that any excluded land captured by individual pockets. Of, uh, whether it's a wetland resource or something else, um, it guarantees those won't throw us off the course of compliance. As I said, there's a lot of flexibility in this table, especially if we increase our maximum building height to three stories. Uh, but I would like board input before we go any further on that. Um, so Madam Chairperson, I'm gonna pause here. Uh, there is more of my presentation, mostly just outlining next steps, the things we're gonna dive into and tackle at our next meeting predominantly. As well as information on how people can best engage. I would love some preliminary feedback tonight on dimensional regulations, uh, but I recognize that that probably won't get flushed out fully to next meeting. But I just went through. Bear with me here, twenty-something slides. So why don't I take a break and pause for questions if you or the rest of the board have any?
Yeah, I would like to open it up, um, for, for board questions. So, um, if you do have any, please raise your hand and we'll take them in order. No board questions. Oh, Cindy, okay. Okay. Go ahead Cindy.
Always Cindy. Um, I guess, um, you know, not really feeling a hundred percent comfortable with the, uh, geographic. Areas that, that we've evaluated, you know, enough of alternative areas and then. Um, so I kind of feel like we're going down a path that still hasn't really been fully vetted. I asked about another location. Um, Liberty Square that I haven't heard back about. Um, I also ask, um, now about, you know, has any big consideration been? In the office parks, it looked like one of the districts was, uh, somewhere near the fourteen fourteen. Um, we've got a couple of big office parks and I know currently zoning doesn't allow that, but this is an overlay, so that might allow for some housing. So I want to hear the three A, um, committees assessment, not the town planner, but maybe the three A's committee's assessment. On that. And then my last comment is, you know, I would really like to understand. What a hybrid situation would look like. Um, you know, we don't have to fully. Zone for, for everything on one parcel is my, or one district. Um, I think. Magnitude of a hundred and eighteen units in one district is still sounds overwhelming to me. Um, so I'd like to understand if the three A committee has a chance to break it out into smaller pieces and, um, you know, what that would entail. So those are my comments.
Um, I'll answer your first question, um, because I know you want response from the advisory group on other questions. But, uh, yes, you did ask for us to further explore, um, specifically a district. At the base of Liberty Square. And so we did review, uh, what is some existing multifamily housing here. Um, ultimately the parcel size and its adjacency to wetlands protection resources. Make it challenging to evaluate that independently. Um, it would be hard to seek, to seek. Uh, compliance without having to greatly upscale the density requirement of a three-acre parcel. Um, so we would be looking at something much more north of thirty units per acre for compliance. Um, I did for, uh, for the sake of exploring, jump across the street. To evaluate, uh, what if we tried to pocket in some other existing housing? And while that did seem feasible, you'll note the wetland resources in the back do then pose a challenge. Uh, for compliance. And so when you think about the wetland resources here, the yellow doesn't just include the wetlands, but you also have to consider that there's that buffer zone. Um, we found that it would be low suitability for compliance, uh, and we did not explore further from there.
Did that answer the question? How many acres? I, I, I kind of lost you. You know, there's a bunch of, um, multifamily housing currently. It just. You know, again, I, I, I understand you're putting some other screening on it, but how many acres of land did you evaluate?
So we, I started the evaluation, uh, with this parcel right here, which is about two and a half acres. Uh, that holds the, uh, the R-one district. Uh, and then I jumped across the street to add a couple of parcels over here. But again, you'll see the wetlands and other constraints, uh, do hinder, uh, what our development potential would be for the area.
I guess I'd, uh, well, I'll ask them. Somehow that be documented. I, I don't quite see it visually, but okay, can move on.
You could probably create a quick, um, overlay, right? Um, with the setbacks on it, Alec, uh, just to show how you, uh, got to where you are.
Um, we can, we can work through it. I will, I, I will note for the board, we are starting to get to the end of the process. Um, and by that I mean the, the physical time constraint process. And so I'm gonna be hesitant to how much I commit to at this stage. Um, but I can do my best to, to provide a little additional documentation and explanation of how we got there.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important to document, you know, why not? So, okay.
One other thing, you know, I know, um, Rich and I have sat on the three A committee and I see Rich's hand up in a minute too. Um. But, um, you know, it might have been helpful that, um, have the group join us for this discussion. I know this is a little bit late, but maybe. Um, at our next, um, hearing, we can, um, have the three A committee in full, um. Join us for, for a combined discussion about this.
Yeah, so I will note, um, Al Murphy was on the meeting, uh, up until just shortly. I think he had to drop off. Um, Joan Blaustein is here, uh, Joe Ferguson was unable to join us, but four out of the five members are, or were present, three out of the four, or three out of the five now.
Okay, terrific. Thank you, um, for the invitation for them. Uh, okay, Chris, you're up next.
Sure. So I think, um, I think at this stage, just being mindful of what we have to get done, uh, calendar-wise, I think we. We need to narrow in, um. And it looks like it's basically narrowing to one and six. If seven has restrictions that'll make it not feasible. Um, I'm sorry, you probably said it, but I might have missed the specifics. On six, there was. There was a, something unclear about the development or. Yeah, develop ability. Was that? That was, there's something you needed to get more information on?
So. We need to seek an opinion from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities as to whether they would accept this. We feel confident that they would flip that. Ability of the land, um, but where the housing board chair has given us clear direction. That through past exploration, they know their cap at roughly, uh, fifty or so bedrooms. I think the number's slightly larger, but certainly less than a hundred eighteen units. Due to nitrogen loading in the area and what the, what the site could handle from a septic standpoint. Um, we, we would effectively be going forward with a district that we know can't meet the maximum zoning capacity. And where this is a zoning exercise, that doesn't necessarily pose a challenge. But that's not a decision that I or the consultant get to make. So we're just gonna go to the top of the food chain and act, and ask the people who are ultimately going to be evaluating it.
Okay, yeah, cuz that. Yeah, if you, you put an area that could theoretically have up to a hundred and eighteen units in it, but can only actually like support septic for fifth, for. Fifty bedrooms, that's less than that. I mean, that's, that would feel silly. Um, so I think that. In a awkwardly helpful way, that might help narrow our scope, uh, to probably one district that seems to not have been excluded. Uh, for any of the other reasons.
Now, I will, uh, all that said, I will note, we have been told from day one, it is not our job to solve septic or water challenges for any future developers. So I say that optimistically, that from day one, I've been told that's not my problem to work out. Where I have the information in advance, it does feel as though an obligation, especially because. There is the possibility, if we went down this road, it became apparent that we did not disclose information. The, uh, the option would exist for them to reverse our compliance status.
Yeah, and then not Boxborough would decide where to put it. So. Yeah, I think, um. Kind of, yeah, ju-just to summarize, I think the town speaking to where a district should be is really helpful. And we have one in the running that happened to be the, the most common place, you know, place on the map that Boxborough residents were circling. So. Thanks. Yeah, it, it helps narrow it down. I get that there's a lot. So. I got nothing else for now.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, go ahead, Mark.
Okay, um. So I guess. This is kind of what the process has led us to. Um, we've got these districts, we've looked at a lot of things. Uh, everybody's worked hard to kind of bring us. Um, a menu of, of choices. And, and at some point in time, we just have to say, well, then let's make a choice. And I. I'm ready to make a choice. I mean, I've been waiting for the time when we actually get to decide something here. Uh, I'm all in for number one. Because it ticks all the boxes. It's. Not just adjacent to the, the most adjacent lot to the train station, which was the original. It's what precipitated MBTA Communities Act in the first place was, you know, primarily location. On or near, uh, a, a train, a train stop. It's not only the closest, it's the only one, the only location that's walkable. Okay, walkable and bicycableable. Any other place is gonna be a, a long haul. It's not turnkey buildable. So, uh, it's not gonna, we're not gonna get a flood of applications immediately. Some of the other sites are. And we could be flooded, inundated with a hundred units or more very quickly. Um, given, you know, the, the, the current state of economics. I mean, we're, we're not sure, you know, what the builders are gonna do with this. Yet, but so far they seem to be, um, gravitating towards these sites. Uh, and I don't think Boxborough wants to see a hundred units built. In the next two years or three years. And then we're still not sure how long that might take, but certainly that's not what, uh, not, not what I think. I want for this town and I know plenty of other people who feel the same way. Um, it might take years to build out if, if ever. And I'm not, I'm not a fan of full compliance just because the state said, well, we should do it because one size. Again, this starts out as a one-size-fits-all solution that the state has told us that we need to comply with. Um, I, I don't like how that happened and I don't agree with it, but we're gonna have to live with it. But that means, that doesn't mean we have to just. Bow down and comply one hundred percent and they haven't tried to make us. So why should we? Number six, by the way, to me is build-ready and it's gonna, and if, and if it goes on the market, you're gonna see fifty units pop up on that spot overnight. And ask those people, I mean, if they didn't want a fire station there, the fifty-unit. Um, two-story residential complex, they may not like that either. Uh, so that could be problematic. Cause if you were saying, put it there, I bet you there'd be a lot more people in the room tonight. Um, and also the final thing is it's, it's on the corner of town where it's got access to Littleton Water. Which no other location of town has except for across four ninety-five right now. And it could take a long time for it to come across four ninety-five. And it's right there next to Route two and four ninety-five, the ramps to get onto two and four ninety-five. You couldn't get any closer. To those ramps in any part of town. So as far as I'm concerned, just district one is, is the winner. And if we have to wrap this thing up in some reasonable amount of time, then we need to focus on what we need to get this district. You know, the way that we want it, which is the dimensional regulations that Alex already talked about and floated in front of us, which I, I'd love to just. Transition to, okay, well, how do we get a good product there? So that's where I'm at on this. And so I hope we get to the point where we actually get to vote on it.
Thank you. Oh, uh, sorry. Thank you, Mark. Uh, Rich, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Rebecca. Um, so. I guess the, the three districts that we looked at as the, um, when we went on the site tour as part of the, the, uh. The advisory committee, uh, were this district. We looked at district six and then Alec, what was the other district we looked at? Was it three? What was the number of that district?
Uh, district number five.
Five. So those were the top three sort of hits, I'll say, that, you know, kind of came out of the survey. Were identified, those were the, and so five in my mind didn't make a lot of sense. It's right along Mass Ave. It's in the middle of nowhere relative to, it's not close to the MBTA station. Yeah, maybe it's close to four ninety-five. But it's right along Mass Ave and there's multiple parcels that come together with this huge grade between them. So I, like, right after we saw it, and it does replace businesses that have been active there for many, many years. So right after I saw it, I kind of ruled it out. District six sounds interesting. But, um, you know, and, and I think that there's value to having something in a village core center. My vote, vote's a little formal, but my perspective is, I think. I think of MBTA communities, um, and our requirement here. As part of a, I'll say a housing continuum. This is one piece, right, that we have to solve. And it's part of the overall housing scheme or, or approach for Boxborough. I think we can actually do, and I'll probably use words that aren't like, you know, it's not a real phrase in terms of. Uh, any state law or whatever, but I'll say that I think district six, we could probably do a home. Rule type of a, of a housing development that might be mixed-use, might fold in a little bit. Better with the aesthetics in that. Area, um, that might do a better job, you know, with the abutters. And so I, I, I fear that if we go down the path of MBTA communities in zone six. It will be sold quickly. And it will become whatever the, the bylaw allows, which is gonna be a fairly. I guess it'll be a relaxed requirement, if you will. Um, so I think we can do better as part of an overall housing. I guess it'll be a relaxed requirement, if you will. Um, so I think we can do better as part of an overall housing plan to do something different there um, on our own. So that brings me to District One, and I'm kind of there, and, and we walked it. It's, you know, it's a hybrid district, so you, you don't get a hundred percent new build, you have some existing. You have those fingerling lots on the front, which, you know, while the owners may not be interested in doing anything today, um, it certainly does provide um, an avenue for future growth uh, there or, or replacement or, or increased density, whatever, whatever it may be. Plus, you have the new build aspect of it. So I think that makes a lot of sense to me. It is close to the train station, and it's very close to Littleton Water. In fact, I don't know if it's been confirmed, but is, is the condominium complex on Lot One that's noted there? Is that in fact on Littleton Water right now? Has that been confirmed?
I have been told that it's on Littleton Water. I am waiting for confirmation from Littleton Electric Light and Water. I have confirmed, though, that there is an eight-inch line that at least runs up to the town line, and I would find it odd if it's capped specifically on the town line.
Okay, so the fact that there's water there really adds to it. This is, it's an incremental development, it meets the requirement. So we could lock this up today, and we've met the requirement. My only sort of hesitation is, Alec, I don't know where, I know you talked to the residents, and I think I heard you said you talked to some of the owners. Have all of the owners been, has there been a meeting with all of the owners? I know we're in a public hearing tonight, and they can be on the, in, in the audience maybe, but has there been a discussion with the owners on these parcels?
So I have reached out to the property owners of eleven seventy-two and eleven seventy-eight. They're different owners, but it's a familial connection, so I'm trying to arrange a meeting with them. Um, I did, uh, I, I had Ian go in, and he door-knocked, and he was even chased out of an apartment building here, uh, hand-delivering and, and hanging uh, notices and letters to, to folks to make them aware. Um, and we mailed to every single registered owner, where it's a condominium association, that's much easier to do. Uh, but we mailed to everybody in Mean More Apartments or Mean More Condominiums. Okay, it's, I, I, to be honest, and I need to be transparent about this, we had a shameful turnout. It was, it was only three individuals out of the a hundred thirty-something that we directly reached to. Um, and I believe that to be a combination of, of apathy towards, towards the exercise, uh, but also a combination of, I simply need to do more. So I'm working now with our Community Services Division um, to, to reach clients who might be in this neighborhood, uh, effectively leverage a direct in with individuals, even if that's gonna be one-on-one Zoom meetings. And then earlier today, I took a Zoom meeting um, with uh, two property owners who own a combined, I think, three out of these four apartment buildings.
Okay. Um, and then I guess the other point I'll make, and this, you know, it's prob- there's probably not enough time to make this all happen for this, but again, it's part of the continuum. I'm looking at the, so we got a letter in our packet um, from uh, Mr. Roy Copley, which presented an interesting concept. And I, I don't know whether that can work or not, cuz it's town conservation land, I believe, that, that is, uh, that he was referring to. But, or it's municipal-owned land, so maybe it can work, I don't know. But it caused me to open up, I appreciate the input, and it caused me to open up the GIS and look at the map. And what immediately comes to mind is there are three parcels along Liberty Square that are currently industrial-commercial parcels that appear to be parcels that could be integrated. Um, and I'm sorry, my, my, my GIS just kind of went dark. But uh, there are three parcels that are, there's currently, I think, three industrial buildings uh, from Liberty Field all the way to the, kind of the end of the Boxborough Line, and they kind of go back. So at least two of those parcels uh, on the backside connect to Hill Road. Right across, so, so I think you can see twelve-twenty is probably one of them. But they connect right onto Hill Road on the other side of this development. So as you look at it long-term, you could, and it's right next to a recreational field. So I think there's a lot of, well, like, so we have, I think from a planning standpoint, we should explore that. If not as part of the MBTA Communities inclusion, cuz you could say, well, maybe we include those three parcels instead of the new build here, so you really have a changeover from industrial-commercial to eventual housing. Um, I don't know if there's enough time to do that, cuz I'm, I'm okay with this district. But I do believe that if you look at it from a long-term planning perspective, taking a close look at those three parcels and integrating it from a housing perspective, if not under MBTA Communities zoning, but under a home, a home project, I think there's, there's great value that can be had in terms of integrating all that. It's close to the MBTA Station, it's close to Littleton Water. It, literally, you can access it from, I mean, potentially from Hill Road, there is some wetlands in there. But anyway, that, I think where, where this sort of cements for me, this district is the fact that we can have an expansion, if not under strict MBTA rules, our own rules, but we can have an expansion and a conversion of industrial property that currently sits next to recreational and abuts com- uh, um, AR and, and residences. So there could be a longer-term growth of housing in this area. Um, I think that sort of add, adds to the interest for me to this particular zone. So I, I, I think, Mark, you said it, I think we've, we've got to get to a point where we home in on something. And we start to focus on the dimensional requirements and the bylaw, um, is, is my, sort of where I sit today. Thank you, Rebecca.
Yeah, thanks, Rich. Uh, go ahead, Chris.
Did anyone else have anything for us before I go again?
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, yeah, so, um, I'm just looking at, I got, I got over there at the GIS. So in that image, the lot that's in the bottom-right corner, one-one-ninety, there is a chunk of swamp that, so the wetland uh, that goes through that and touches uh, twelve-twenty and eleven-sixty. So that might work. Um, that's where, on Liberty Square, just before it turns into Littleton, the uh, Wag- Wagsborough and uh, the barn, and those buildings, the swamp is behind them. So, but it is potential, yeah, Liberty's, Liberty Field is, is right through there. Um, I think at this point, it is time to narrow, not broaden focus. Uh, and through the work that's already been done, it, it is clear that, you know, District One is looking like the one that makes sense. Um, it's, it's currently the most viable of all the things that we have, so I'd be ready to, to go forward with this as well. Um, I think it just makes sense. There, there isn't, if there were others that looked equal or better, it'd be worth still considering, but I, I think at this point in the game, unless something appears that looks significantly better, I see no reason to not move forward with this one.
Thanks, Chris. Um, okay, Cindy, go ahead.
Hey, can I just ask again, what was the minimum acreage the three A Committee was looking at?
The minimum acreage?
Yes.
So the state, uh, the state complies a minimum of no district being less than five acres in size. If we were to just plainly comply the basic equation, all-included land um, or all-eligible land, I think that factors out to somewhere between seven and a half to ten acres of land um, with fifteen units per acre. But again, that's, that's a plain, effectively, what you'd need is you'd need the perfect land, so to speak, which would be undeveloped land, immediately accessible along frontage, the entire length of, uh, with great opportunity uh, for, for flexible dimensional regulations. So picture a perfect square rectangle along a public or private right-of-way existing today.
Okay, thanks. And I, I guess I'll just ask again, did the three A Committee consider a split, splitting more than one lot for the purposes of accomplishing the a hundred and eighteen unit requirement?
We touched upon it very, very slightly. I mean, it was, it was not something that we had a robust discussion of. Um, I think in our final meeting, um, prior to this public hearing, um, we did, uh, we did touch upon it uh, in the discussion, and really from the frame of, you know, it's, it's, we've got this parcel here that could, something could be done with at a lower density, and then we've got existing housing elsewhere that could be at a larger density. Um, but I would not presume to speak for my advisor group members. Uh, they can certainly speak for themselves as well. I see Joan does have her hand up, Madam Chairperson, if you'd like to call her.
I do see that. I'm just trying to wrap up the, the board comments first. Um, is everybody comfortable moving to public comment then, at this point? Not seeing any board members, so please, Joan, thank you for joining us and staying so late.
Uh, thank you. Um, just a couple of observations. Um, I'm interested, Alec, to hear more about your meetings with the folks at Mean More, your attempts to meet up there. Because um, I, I think we, we did as much work in the timeframe with the consultant as we could on finding these locations. You could always, uh, you know, you can always do more if you had more time and more resources. But my concern is, if, if we all agree tonight that the, you know, District One makes a lot of sense, it could accomplish all our goals. But between now and the time this has to become a warrant, or if we don't make serious progress in meeting with those folks, we could end up with, those residents could sink the whole project uh, like we saw with uh, Fire Station Stow Road. You don't, you don't need a lot to, you know, of opposition. And I also see, see that this is gonna be a huge, um, heavy lifting for education because I can imagine getting right-up-to-town meeting, and people have no idea what this is about. And I mean, that's, no matter how good a job you do, that can happen anyhow. Um, so I just wanna think, um, you know, wha- what will it take to advance, you know, meetings with those folks? Um, because obviously, if, if that's the area that's selected, and we wanna go with that, it's not going to affect most of town. So we, we may have that little, you know, pocket of, you know, these folks are dead-set against it. What's our Plan B? You know, wha- do we come with another district? Do we, you know, put the full court press on education? Or do we, you know, end up, and I know a lot of other towns have gone through this. So whatever lessons we can learn from them, um, you know, how many districts to put forward, how much education. Uh, I just see this as a, you know, something that most people in town just are not going to end up being educated enough. Uh, so we have to build that into the process.
Um, Madam Chairperson, can I respond to a couple of points there too?
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Joan, for that. I, some really key and important points, as, as we saw even this annual town meeting. You know, depending on the, the public reaction, it can sway things. Um, in this case, this law does require the simple majority, so I, I count our, I'm not a religious man, but I count our blessings there. We, we need a simple majority in this case. Um, and then, Joan, you had asked to, to know a little more, bit more about the, the meeting. So I can say outright, the three individuals who walked into those meetings, um, they walked out as yes votes if they show up to town meeting. Um, they, you know, they had, came in with a really open mind, they were really, um, interested in learning more. And they all said, it's like, this makes sense, you know, it makes sense to them. Um, the, the property owners I met with today via Zoom, they said, you know, the fifty-fifty. With the, the one I asked at the very end, he said, you know, I, I see both sides of it, you know, perhaps the immediate impacts to the neighbors if construction happened, but also acknowledged, it's not a construction exercise, it's a, it's a zoning exercise. Um, of all the property owners I have spoken with, um, none of them at this stage intend for, um, for immediate construction. Like I say, caveat to that, I can't predict the future, priorities are always allowed to change. So I can't speak on their behalf, but I can speak to what I've been told.
Thanks, Alec. Um, okay, um, Les Fox, go ahead.
Thanks, Rebecca. Um, I, I understand the rationale for, um, the Mean More Group, shall we say. Um, makes perfect sense. Um, but I, I'm trying to understand, uh, why, uh, the three condominium complexes to the west of four ninety-five, uh, Harvard Ridge, Brook Village, and the Codman Hill Apartments, all of which are currently multifamily units, weren't identified as being part of an overlay district because doing so, it would seem to me, would preserve the town's ability to uh, protect that re- asset, that housing asset in the future. If, uh, those units needed, ever needed to be, um, removed or rebuilt um, for some reason, uh, uh, they're all going to get public water from Littleton Water Department, so they have a wonderful situation with respect to water. And they're already dense units as it, as, as it stands now. I, I don't know what's really required here because I hear mixed messages, that we only have to do an overlay district, we don't have to build anything. Yet there are the gyrations you're going to go through on the Stow Road parcel, which we have to do something to show intent, like it's really possible. So what's the deal on the condominium complexes to the west of four ninety-five? Why couldn't they be included in another overlay district that would allow those units to be preserved for the future?
Yeah, really great question. Yeah, uh, Madam Chairperson, can I respond?
Yeah, of course, go ahead.
Thank you. So really, really great questions, Les. This was actually a central discussion during the mapping forum hosted in November. Uh, big topic of conversation was, wouldn't it be great if we could just cover all of, uh, if we could cover all of Swanson Road, all of Swanson Court, all of these apartment buildings? Um, one, one or two groups did note as well, um, the apartment buildings over here. Uh, as you can see, the draft districts landed here and here. Ultimately, what myself and the consultant, as we modeled these things out, and as we evaluated, you can see all these pockets of yellow land. Those are all the things we know outright would be excluded. You can also see from the blue framing here, the edge of the wetlands, so picture a, a buffer on top of that too. Those are things that made it incredibly difficult to actually model the individual parcels. I mean, we could include a parcel like this one, which I can tell you today, there is an existing Harvard Ridge apartment on it today. Or sorry, uh, Harvard Ridge Condominium on it today, but you can see that only a fraction of the total parcel is actually eligible for inclusion in the district. When you do that so many times over, it's actually really hard to creep up to that capacity that you require. And so while from an ethic is, uh, from an ethics standpoint, it makes all the sense in the world to include them, the actual return you get on the included land and the eligible land, it doesn't really get up to that capacity. Now, the other challenge you run up against if you start doing it from that framework, is you really get close to spot zoning. And so let's say, for example, we were to evaluate Swanson Road only. Let's say I only picked the apart- the, the existing condominium buildings. Well, that in and of itself could be described as spot zoning, and we run the risk of getting shot down at that stage. So then let's say, okay, well, let's, let's include the, the parcels next door, so that it's not spot zoning, we're including a couple other pieces of land. Well, then you do still open the door for new construction, but you open it up on larger, more industrial-sized parcels. And ultimately, that didn't seem favorable. Again, not to speak on their behalf, but, um, when the advisory group reviewed the results of Pfeiffer's, Pfeiffer's Day, there was a public interest in seeing District Number Two here potentially get developed. Not nearly, or potentially get zoned, not nearly as much as District Number One, but there was interest in it. And ultimately, the advisory group discussed forward, the potential unit capacity here was rather large, more than what we needed. And the potential of having to retrofit this, um, would allow for more immediate new housing growth, and that was a little daunting. Um, similarly, uh, over here on the Codman Hill, if I was to do, uh, if, say we were to include all of Swanson Road and Swanson Court as part of this district, cuz we're just trying to get up to that number, but then I also jump down here, and I just pick one parcel, the, the apartment complex, that again is gonna get flagged for spot zoning.
Um, seems like the state's talking on the both sides of its mouth, really, I mean, saying you can put an overlay district, but then, oh, you can't do spot zoning. So you're tying your hands. It's not rational, in my opinion.
It's, it's a tricky, it, it's a tricky thing to maneuver. It's politics, whether it's at a local level or in this case, a state level.
Yeah. I mean, to me, it makes perfect sense to do an overlay that which would protect for the future housing we already have that's very old and likely in the future will need to be torn down and rebuilt. It'd be nice if it could be done so under right, as I buy right use, but if the stars are aligned against it.
Thank you, Les. Uh, are there any additional public comments? I'm not seeing any, um, and right now it's ten-thirty, Alec. I know you wanted to do- I'm not seeing any. And right now, it's ten thirty, Alec. I know you wanted to dig into regular, like, you know, dimensions and stuff like that, but I feel like maybe at this point we need to set up another working session or another hearing to discuss those things more and let the board kind of absorb kind of what we've discussed tonight a little bit more. You in agreement with that?
Sounds good to me. My bandwidth is getting is getting less and less. I do just want to highlight, so I will provide this PowerPoint and the materials to the board, though, also be posted on the town website. Next steps for everybody. There are still some outstanding questions that this board and the advisory group have asked for. As I stated, we will provide you draft language so you can start working on it. At your August fourth hearing, I will be asking for additional input targeted specifically towards dimensional regulations, and I will point back to the survey results that we received because there's some information you can glean from a visual preference survey. Sorry, I'm breezing through this next part a little faster than even I expected. For everyone at home, this is effectively our timeline. We're at the public hearing of July twenty first. We have effectively two more public hearing dates to to really dig in and work through this. The biggest one probably being August fourth, where we'll get the bulk of the work done. The language will be submitted to the Select Board in September for mailing to every household, and we'll have a fall town meeting vote followed by submission to the Attorney General. On our town website, we do host a detailed adoption timeline, frequently asked questions, all of the meeting materials that have been discussed and reviewed here, as well as at the advisory group, which you can reach either by scanning that QR code or simply going to the front page of the website and clicking this nice little box here that says MBTA Communities Multifamily Zoning in Boxborough. Click here to learn more. It's been a pleasure, as always, meeting with the board, talking through this important work. I appreciate the continued opportunity to work on this with the board and with my advisory group. My recommendation to you at this time is that you move to continue this public hearing to August fourth at seven oh five PM, noting that in the meantime, I am going to continue working to reach the various residents and property owners where District Number Six is still under consideration by the state. I am also going to begin reaching out to Sheriff's Meadow, Tisbury Meadow, and Enclave, which represents the largest density of a butter's, and I'm going to start doing some outreach with them more directly as well. And I look forward to taking this back up in two weeks. Madam Chairperson, I'm gonna stop talking and turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you. I would like to ask again to Alec that you share your presentations in advance of the meeting with us and also make them part of our packets as well for the public, okay? Just I think it's better to get it out there earlier for us, but I thank you for for your presentation. Thank you. I see Rich, before we make a motion, I see Rich's hand up, so I'm
I'll make it quick, given the hour, two things. One is, Alec, I heard you were going to go off and start engaging Sheriff's Meadows and Tisbury Meadows. At what point, like, I know we we don't have a decision yet, we don't like we but like, at what point do we focus Alex's energy towards the district? What more information do we need to get to the district? So I guess that's a broader question for the board holistically. That's my first question. Second question is on those dimensional requirements, Alec. It would be helpful to know, and maybe in the next iteration, is like, what's a higher density, like, what's a taller bill, like taller three stories look like, and what's that do to the setback versus what you've got there? And like, how do we start to make those judgment calls? And I assume what you were presenting is one set of dimensional regs for the entire district, not doing a split like we had talked about previously, which would be more complicated. And more complicated usually means more difficult, harder to get through.
Yes.
I think we need to look at the surroundings, frankly, for whatever zoning, you know, district we pick. Really, it has to be appropriate and sit well with its surroundings is my very quick opinion on that, but so it depends on where it is, right?
So one one solution to this is I could do a low level evaluation of the existing conditions of certain sites. So for example, in District One, I would look at the open space, the average open space of those various apartment buildings and Mean More condominiums. I wouldn't necessarily look at the single family home or the undeveloped lot, but that would give you a context of what an existing open space requirement looks like. I could do that for nearly every one of those data points. The only tricky one being the minimum lot size. That one I really do recommend keeping to the ten thousand square feet. That's a really nice number that then allows you to play around with things like setbacks, height. Height's another one. I can very easily just look at total number of units, whether they're in a two story, three story or other size complex, and and we can give you something like that. I would love to give you 3D modeling, and as I said earlier, I'm going to be conscious of what I can commit to. So I can't promise 3D modeling even by your hearing on the eighteenth, but I can at least do a low level analysis of existing conditions in District One and District Six.
That answer your question, Rich?
It answered the dimensional one. I guess the how, what what information do we need to home in on? I know we're, Cindy, you were asking questions about like other districts. We, you know, Alec is like, we're still, I guess, chasing potentially District Six, like, what? Yeah, maybe it's we need another another two week stretch till we get to the eighteenth, but I feel like Alex running around on different districts. Do we focus in on one and when? We need to focus on one. The question is when? Do we give it another meeting? Do we? Just wanna, what more information do we need to get to to home in on that, you know, the district?
I don't need any more information. Do you need more information, Rich?
I I don't. Based on everything I've seen, I was, of course, I was on the I was on the advisory committee, so I got to see a lot and talk through a lot. So no, I don't need any more information.
I'd like to hear the answer to that question, too, because, you know, at some point, again, the longer we delay in picking a district, then Alex is going to go chase other sites. And we're worried getting this wrapped up. I mean, I I think it's a lot more prudent for us and a lot more linear to just simply say, if we're, if if the rest of us are ready to to sit to pick that site, then I'd say, let's pick the site, and then at least Alex got his marching orders. He can concentrate on that site.
I have to agree that knowing, knowing the amount of things that we are tasked to accomplish in a relatively short period, any wasted effort on on Alex's part is is a shame. So I guess I have to agree there. If we can narrow down, everything I've seen points to one fitting, and I'm not seeing another option that it's least, that is at least as good, so. Yeah. Yeah, so I guess that's, I Rebecca, I get wanting, wanting to have a have a look at the area to like kind of check the boxes that almost feels more like site plan review. Maybe more
If we're like, you know, changing heights of buildings and you have them all in like a residential, single story home kind of situation, you know what I mean? I think that's not very sensitive to the the neighboring. So just getting our head around it and understanding it, I think, is an added step that would benefit us to do. I guess my comment would be like, do we need to set up a second option to Joan's point, you know, a backup option here? You know, I think that's pretty valid, just in case this something falls through or it doesn't work. Rich, your hands up again. Sorry, I'm seeing you now.
So I guess
Okay.
Cindy and Rebecca, then. I mean, what what do you need to 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 make a decision on the site? What are the deal breakers here? I mean, that's kind of, we get down to it, we got to make a decision. Sometimes it's like, what else do you need?
I'm curious, how many units are currently, all those parcels collectively? How many housing units?
That information is readily available, and I can provide it for your August fourth meeting. At this late hour, that would take me fifteen, twenty minutes to put together.
Okay, that's just something I'd be interested. I mean, you know, it may work. A hundred and eighteen units anywhere in in the town of Boxborough is a lot. I guess I'd like some frame of reference, how many units are in some of our larger multifamily buildings today? I know there's different styles, but, you know, a hundred and eighteen is a lot of units, so I'm just trying to understand from a density perspective, how many acres we're talking about, and, you know, I can't even speak to dimensional until I have a better feel for the land area, so I need a little little more. I can do my own research, but I'm just trying to it's a little premature to put dimensional requirements on tonight, for sure.
Were you talking on Leonard Road? The Mean More Apartments?
Yeah, yeah, of the parcels that he's that you've identified in this District One, how many existing units are there? Because, you know, those folks could end up getting displaced. I just want to make that that point as well.
I do have to intercede there. That's a big, big word. While I can't speak for the apartment buildings, the condominiums would not end up being displaced.
There's seventy-three right now. So I looked it up, our last last meeting.
Nine, but 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 there are a lot of them are dupes, so you got two, two.
That might be it.
Okay, I'd like, I'd just like to get a handle on how many existing units there are. That also gives us a density feel right now, so.
Forty-ish.
I'd say fifty.
Well, Alec, that's information Alec can provide. I guess I'd like to get some.
Okay, so so how is that going to make, I mean, that'll help us dimensional requirements?
Yes. Yeah.
But
Yeah, I'm trying to get a sense of scale. What does a hundred and eighteen units look like on X number of acres on that, you know, over there?
Fifty units.
Brook Village is ninety-nine units spread across, I don't know, it goes to H, so like fifteen buildings.
But on how many acres? I mean, that's the kind of thing I think I'm just trying to
Point eight, two point four five acres. That's that's Mean More.
Yeah, so the big, the big undeveloped chunk, a couple condo buildings in there would would bring the whole group up to one eighteen without an issue. Something, the equivalent density of those two buildings spread over those that big undeveloped area should cover it, if I'm just ballparking, right?
Yeah, I mean, Alec should have the, right, I mean, Matt right? I mean, they
Don't want to keep coming back to this. I mean, it's like, again, every Alex already got hearing notices going out saying that we're gonna have, we're gonna start working on dimensional requirements at the next meeting. Well, we're not going to work on dimensional requirements until we've made this decision for which site. I mean, what else, what else do you need?
Rebecca, can I can I say something that might help end this discussion?
Yes, please.
This board has every right to wave me off and tell me just do this. You have, you've had that right from day one. I told you that with paper compliance. If you want to pass a motion that I exclusively look at that, then that's what I would do. But I am not ready to give up on District Number Six. For over twenty years, this town has been trying to figure out how to put housing on seventy-two Stowe Road. And I don't have enough information telling me that this isn't the solution yet. Now, I'm, I'll admit, it's not, it's not the prettiest and brightest of picture, but I feel it would be a disservice not to continue exploring it, at least on behalf of the Housing Board, who has been trying for years to figure something out. So that's my two cents, but you as a board have the right to do as you wish here.
Thank you, Alec. I appreciate that. Go ahead, Mark.
I have a question then about that. So if we assign this lot to selection one, to the MBT Communities Act, are we precluded from pointing to another location at some later date and applying the same type of zoning rules or regs to that once we've done it?
Are you precluded? No, but it would effectively, if you zone something now, and then you go back and add to your MBTA Community District, let's assume at a lower density, then you would need to, you would need to revise your existing districts to make sure that average unit still comes out to a fifteen units per acre density. So it's not impossible, but it's not just a straight one to one, do this now and then do it later.
So they don't want you to do more. They just want
They do want you to do more. However, if we want to leverage the simple majority vote, it has to be within the MBTA Communities' compliance scope, and that means further revision. At any time, this town could pursue, let's say, five unit per acre zoning overlay there by two thirds majority. But not, but but it's the MBTA community stuff that gets you the simple majority.
Thank you. That that's clearer. So so you're trying to bring it all in at a majority as opposed to a super majority.
Okay, I'm looking at, just a minute, please. I'm looking at the clock, and it's ten forty-five right now. We are going to be continuing this based on on these conversations to our another meeting date, I believe you said, on August fourth. So I just want to make sure, I'm I'm fine with fielding a couple more questions, but I do want to point out the the hour, and people have to work, and we have a couple more items to get through before the end of this meeting, so with that in mind, keep it brief and get your questions answered. So, Rich, go ahead.
Yep, I'll keep it brief. I won't debate the topic anymore, other than I, the only point I'll make, and it's probably part of the discussion on the continuation. I think, you know, I'm I'm kind of surprised that we don't have that much participation here. Can we put the actual addresses of District One and District Six in the public hearing notice for next time? I would like to hear, if we're really pursuing District Six, I really want to hear from that community.
You you can't do that in time for August fourth. For August eighteenth, I could potentially renotice the public hearing with additional information. Admittedly, that gets messier and messier and more convoluted. What I would recommend at that stage is we go back out, we do more mailing, we do more door knocking, we just bang on doors until they they listen to us, and we say, come to this meeting, we're considering your home. So alarm is
Okay with that. I don't want to screw up the public hearing process, but I do think it's important that we're very clear to people what exact addresses we're talking about.
Thanks, Rich. Cindy, go ahead.
Yeah, I think my only comment is I I believe any housing related zoning is now a simple majority vote, so I if someone can bet that, but I believe the legislature changed it, only fifty-one percent majority for housing related zoning items. But please bet that.
That would be music to my ears, and I can easily get that answer for our next meeting, if not sooner.
Think she's right. But we'll find out. All right.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments for this evening?
Make a motion to continue the hearing?
August fourth at seven oh five, did you say?
To August fourth at seven oh five.
Thank you. And Rich, did you want a second?
Thought Chris did.
Oh, Chris.
I did, but
Somebody said Okay, Chris. Okay, so moved by Mark, seconded by Chris, in order of how I see you.
Before you take the vote, can I just ask, do we have anything scheduled for August? What else do we have scheduled for August fourth? Because it sounds like it needs a fair amount of public input, so.
This municipal use.
Can we ask the planner, is that, are those the only two items so far for August fourth?
I am recommending the minor modification that did not come before you tonight also be taken up then, but those are the only three items I recommend you take up.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, so motions on the floor, unless there's other deliberation. Okay, in order of how I see you, Chris Doughty.
Uh, Doughty, I.
Cindy Markowitz.
Mark Witz, I.
Rich Gazzardi.
Gazzardia.
Mark White.
And I.
And Burner, I. Thank you, guys. Okay, my next question to you, Alec, is what do we need to get through tonight? We could probably kick that minutes off, the meeting minutes, the last one, if you want to pull those up.
Uh, yes, that would be preferable because I do want to enter those into the record at your next meeting. That requires approving them first. Bear with me while I just get those pulled up.
Thank you.
But otherwise, that is the only urgent item you have left on your agenda. You can adjourn if you so choose afterwards.
Which minutes are we going to?
You are looking at
July fifteen?
July fifteen or the seven, or June seventeen?
July fifteen. You are within the timeframe that you can still, you can still approve June seventeenth at your next meeting.
Okay, any members have any comments? Revisions? I mean, go ahead, Cindy.
Um, yeah, just a couple. Jeff, am I on mute? No, I'm on mute. Jeff Wyman should be identified as representing Campagnelli Company. Uh, Jeff Wyman should be, uh, identified as representing Campagnelli Company. Um, and then my only other comment is that all the board members should be referred to in the formal, uh, Mr. Ms.'s, uh, last name. Um, actually, I have one more comment. Um, line forty-seven, working with Jesse again, uh, should have his last name and then natural heritage should have the full name, Natural Heritage Endangered Species Program. And, uh, let's see, there was one more. I guess that's it. Thanks.
At the very end, I think Mark leaves twice, which I think is an error.
That was the only thing I noticed. He left twice.
Yeah, I think Rich left. It was Mark and Rich. We left at the same time. Mark was in my car. I went back and asked if other board members wanted a ride back to their car and, uh, they respectfully declined. We can leave that out of the minutes, but I did leave with Mark.
Actually, I had one more comment. Sorry. One, one thirteen should be Trail Ridge, not Rich Trail Condominiums.
Thank you. Um, any other comments on these minutes?
Make the motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mark and, uh, seconded by Rich. Thank you both. And, uh, roll call, um, Chris Doughty.
Uh, Doughty abstained, wasn't there?
Okay, thanks. Uh, Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, aye.
Uh, Mark White.
Would I?
Rich Gazzardi.
Gazzard, aye.
And Burner, aye. Thank you. Um, I guess I would, we can skip over a couple of these items just touching on the, um, associate member, uh, recommendation that got res, is getting rescheduled due to, um, some conflict of, of attendance tonight. Um, so that's why we won't take that up this evening. Um, and then I wanted to give, if there was any really pressing items for committee reports to report that anybody needs to address. Okay, not really hearing any. Um, and then again, we discussed that the minor modification will be brought up at a later date. Um, so, okay, I think that is the end of this evening. Ooh, good run, guys. Um, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Perfect move by Mark and I think it was seconded by Chris. Um, any discussion? All right. Um, in, in order of how I see you, Mark White.
Would I?
Chris Doughty.
Doughty, aye.
Uh, Rich Gazzardi.
Gazzard, aye.
Cindy Markowitz.
Markowitz, aye.
And Burner, aye. Thanks, guys. Have a great night.